Good afternoon, the Planning Commission is in session. Julie, will you please call a roll?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Pujol?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Vice Chair Campanella?
Here.
Chair Thompson?
Here.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
How about announcements? Do we have any announcements?
We have no announcements.
Okay, thank you. Next item will be a review of the minutes for August 13th. Does anyone have any recommended changes? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Okay, the next item is a review of the minutes and two resolutions for August 20th. We have revised minutes that were passed out. Everyone should have gotten them earlier today. Do we have any comments? Changes?
I move approval as corrected.
Second?
Can we have a motion and a second? And does that include the resolutions as well as minutes?
Yes, yes, the minutes and the resolutions.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll be abstaining, I was absent.
Okay, one abstention.
Second? I'll also be abstaining from...
Okay, two abstentions. Jordan and Schwartz. Okay, at this point, we have testimony from anyone in the public who would like to speak on anything not currently on our agenda today. This is the time to do it. Ms. Galarte, do we have any speaker slips?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
And seeing no one coming forward, we'll close that portion of the public testimony and move to the next item on our agenda, which is a concept review at 301 East Yananaali Street. And I guess, Allison, you're going to give the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Allison Debusk, project planner, and this is a concept review of our project at 301 East Yananaali Street, and it is a proposed commercial development. The project site is located south of the freeway at the northeast corner of Garden and Yananaali Streets. Laguna Channel runs along the site's eastern property line. Here's an aerial photo of the site. As you can see, it's currently used for industrial storage-type uses and is surrounded primarily by industrial uses. However, there are some residential condominiums located west of Garden Street. The proposed project consists of a new two-story building that totals almost 44,400 square feet. Proposed uses include market and retail. 193 parking spaces are proposed, some of which would be covered by the second floor of the proposed building. Access to the site would be from two driveways located on East Yananaali Street, and the project proposes a 25-foot setback from the top of bank of Laguna Channel and also includes a habitat enhancement plan for that creek setback area. Here we have a site plan of the project. The freeway is at the top of the page, and Yananaali Street is at the bottom. Garden Street is on your left, and Laguna Channel is along the right-hand side. The applicant will go into more detail about the project layout and design, so I just wanted to give you a brief introduction. Here are the two driveways along Yananaali Street, and you've got parking with loading in the back, and then the building. Here are some elevations of the building, and the top elevation is the view from Yananaali Street, and the bottom is the view from Garden Street. The maximum height of the building would be 40 feet 6 inches, with the elevator tower extending to 46 feet 9 inches. This is a concept review of the project, and no formal decisions will be made. No formal application has been submitted to the city, and staff has not yet done any formal environmental review. However, although we haven't started environmental review for the project, we do have some information from previous proposals and also some current data, and so we do anticipate that the project would have the potential to have significant impacts related to archaeological resources, hazards, sewer services, visual resources, and traffic. Specifically related to traffic, the proposed use will more than likely have a Class 1 significant impact. We anticipate that it will be drawing customers from north of the freeway as well as diverting customers off of Highway 101. So this is a con... Sorry. As part of the concept review of the project, the Planning Commission can discuss whatever topics you feel are appropriate or important. However, I would like to specifically get feedback from the commission on the following three issues. The first is the proposed creek setback. Next is circulation and overall site planning. And finally, visual resources, specifically massing and potential view impacts. With regard to the creek setback, as I mentioned, the applicant has proposed a 25-foot setback from the top of bank. The project also includes a habitat enhancement plan within the setback area, and permeable paving is proposed for the parking spaces that are adjacent to the 25-foot creek setback. Laguna Channel is known to support the tidewater goby and Pacific pond turtle, and a sensitive species and habitat report was prepared for the project, and it concludes that the proposed setback is adequate. Staff thinks that the proposed 25-foot setback is too small, given recently adopted policies in the general plan to protect and restore creek corridors. Specifically, Environmental Resources Element Policy ER 21 states that protection and restoration of creeks and their riparian corridor is a priority for improving biological values, water quality, open space, and flood control in conjunction with adaptation planning for climate change. As an implementation measure for this policy, the general plan recommends establishing updated creek setback standards with setbacks greater than 25 feet for new structures and hard surfaces adjacent to creeks. Additionally, the city's local coastal plan includes policies to preserve and enhance riparian resources in the coastal zone. Policy 6.10 states that the city shall require a setback buffer between the top of bank and any proposed project, and that the setback will vary depending on specific conditions of the site and the impacts of the project. With regard to circulation and site planning, city transportation staff have identified some concerns with the project's loading and delivery areas, and they've been working with the applicant to ensure that all identified parking spaces function properly. Additionally, they've suggested that areas for shopping cart returns be included within the project. With regard to visual resources, the city has general plan and local coastal plan policies to protect important public views and views to and from the ocean. The applicant has prepared some visual simulations of the project, and these are views from the Garden-Yananaali Street intersection. So again, those are the three issues that staff would appreciate commission feedback on, and this concludes staff's presentation. I would like to note that we received a letter from Urban Creeks Council regarding the project, and that's been distributed to the Planning Commission this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other staff briefings? Okay, I assume the applicant has a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hi, good afternoon.
My name is Trish Allen. I'm with Suzanne Elidge, planning and permitting. This sounds really loud. I don't think I need to explain why we're here with the concept review. Oh, we flipped this slide. So, we really appreciate this opportunity to bring a concept review project to the Planning Commission and gain what we feel is some really critical feedback on this important project. So again, we want to talk about the proposed 25-foot setback visual resources. We want to talk about our restoration plan and also the site layout. And Brian has a... I just have some introductory comments, and then Brian will give a presentation, and then our project ecologist is here behind me to discuss some more information about the analysis that they completed. Very briefly, the Cabrillo Plaza Specific Plan. This is Site D of the Cabrillo Plaza Specific Plan, or we refer to it as SP2, so the Second Specific Plan Certified in the City. The Wright family, the Wright family, who are sitting behind me in the audience here, their vision of the property development has evolved since its approval in the early 80s. Mayor Lodge would recall many of those hearings at that time. But most recently, in the project that we talked about a little bit at the site visit that Mr. Debusk touched on in terms of our technical analysis and history, we had, in 2008, there was an EIR scoping hearing held here at the Planning Commission. Chair Thompson, you were on the commission at that time. A very similar project was proposed, but that project encompassed three different sites. Site A of the specific plan, that had a residential component. A site that's not part of the specific plan that had an affordable housing component, and then Site D that proposed a variety of commercial uses, including office and a retail component. Today, the projects were just pursuing the development of Site D, and it's a little bit different. It's scaled back from all those different uses that were proposed in 2008. Again, that 2008 project was put on hold at that time. We know what was happening in our world. The recession was starting to hit Santa Barbara as well. One thing I wanted to touch on that maybe some of you aren't aware of is that the specific plan actually has been implemented, the first phase, and that includes the Wright family land dedication to extend Garden Street from Yananaali Street down towards Cabrillo to the end of their property boundary at the railroad crossing. There was also an extension of Yananaali Street from Laguna Channel to the intersection at Garden Street, and those street improvements were completed in the late 80s. And what's important about that, and the reason... I'm sorry, 90s. What's important about bringing that up is that those street improvements and what we see there today with the boulevard and the improvements in terms of traffic volume, those improvements serve as premitigation for traffic and circulation in this area of the city. So, you're going to be hearing that a couple of times from me, I think. Brian's going to get into much more detail about the project, the siding, what we've come up with, the site constraints. We feel that this is such a prominent location in our city, that this use really makes sense here, this retail use, and this gateway to the waterfront with the street improvements that those have provided, the fact that it's adjacent to the funk zone. There's a lot happening down in this city, in this part of the city. We feel that there's both a local and transient customer base that will be readily available to come to this market, and this has the potential to make a very positive contribution to the city. And one thing, in terms of going back to that project in 2008, we did consider that a mixed-use project as it spanned over several different properties, and this project I see that way, too, because this is just development, proposed development of one component of the specific plan. Site A, which is diagonally across the street, that we previously proposed residential units, has just launched on the market for a long-term ground lease marketing effort within maybe 10 days ago or two weeks ago. So, please take that into consideration, that that... There should be, you know, a development application that will be coming before you in some time. As Mr. Debusk explained, we have not begun our environmental review process. We have a lot of comments that you may have seen in the PRT letter. We've reviewed them. We realize there's some more technical analysis that's pending, but without some feedback on our proposed setback and some of the visual resource and site layout, we really felt it was important to come in early and have a check-in with you and get those comments so then we can go away and continue our technical analysis. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Brian, and then Greg McGowan, our ecologist, will have a few closing comments. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Cornell?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you very much. Allison has given you a good background. I thought I'd give you a little bit more history, which is always fun. This, of course, is the site, and if we go way back, like 162 years back, this is actually what it... where it was, right, in the estuary? But fast forward 100 years, or not quite 100 years, sorry, more like 60 years, incredibly, all of that area got filled in, and you can actually see there to the right of the red dot, the channel that was created to pick up all the stormwater from that lower east side. And of course, all of you know the history of this area. You know, not only did it get filled in, certainly in the rush at the turn of the century, but then it became, a lot of those sites that weren't developed in this area got then filled in with earthquake rubble after the 25 earthquake. Then we move forward to 1953, my birth year, and the freeway...
Thought you were younger than that.
I know. I'm younger than I look. The freeway was there. Of course, it stopped at Anacapa and State Street and Chapala. It's interesting that there was that large a vacant piece of parcel, you know, piece of land sitting there. And of course, actually going back to this, you can see the remnants to the right of this Laguna Channel of the old racetrack that was a prominent feature, again, kind of at the turn of the century within the city. So 53, and then we look at it in 1995, big jump. Crosstown freeway, of course, is installed, but you can see that the Garden Street extension is not yet in place at that point. And again, the site today. So, zooming in, the channel is very obvious along here. Here is the top of bank and the 25-foot setback. And you all remember, we actually stood in this driveway here and looked at that white spot where the 25-foot setback was. As Allison mentioned, this is being used for a number of industrial, you know, storage-type uses. So this is our plan for the market, and, you know, the market is something that basically was the premise that I started with here. Through the course of working on this for the last couple of years, we've talked to a lot of different markets. Whole Foods has certainly been a prominent possibility that we've talked to, and actually along the way, they've given us advice in what kind of things they would expect. So that has been the clear direction from a design standpoint. So one of the first things you have to deal with when you're dealing with a market is getting a big truck in there to load and offload, and in most markets, you realize that they have in-and-out circulation. So a truck comes in, it goes to the loading area, and it's able to go out. We do not have that luxury because Garden Street, of course, descends down into the ground, and so we really only have the Yananaali frontage to deal with, and we really can't exit out here close to Yananaali and Garden because that's not a... That would not be a dangerous curb, or would be a dangerous curb cut, so we need to make sure our curb cuts are set back. Consequently, what I... You know, where I started here was the flow of the truck. Basically, the trucks come in, and then they have to back into the loading area, and then they do a tight turn and exit back out the property. Now, Allison mentioned that transportation staff has some concerns about this. I think that they are... They're not challenging this flow of the truck so much as we are very tight. For instance, we show the radius, and you can see this on the plans. We show that the line of the truck is right up against the edge of the curb or right up against the edge of a slight little retaining wall here along Garden, and we would anticipate that we would free up that maneuvering so that there wouldn't be that concern. They also express concern about these parking spaces that are adjacent to the loading... I'm sorry, my little circle is so dim. But these spaces here that obviously would be prevented from backing out should a truck be loading, be in the loading dock, and our intent has always been that we would have this excess parking along the back of the site adjacent to 101, which is going to be employee parking for the facility, that it wouldn't be customer parking. So we actually believe that could work, but those were sort of the two primary issues that we discussed with transportation staff. Obviously, the next factor whenever doing a plan like this is parking. You know, form follows parking, and it has been our goal to get as many parking spaces as possible. In this modern environment, grocery stores typically want to have as many spaces as they can get. So we are slightly in excess of 1 per 250 in terms of the parking count, and you can see that not only do we have the significant surface lot in front of the building, but we also have then parking underneath the market. So the market is raised up on a podium. It's around 36,000 square feet on that podium level, which has been sort of the target of the markets that we have discussed or talked with. And on the downstairs, I didn't mention, but we do have about 7,000 or 8,000 square feet of additional retail to support that market, so that could be a little coffee shop. It could be a coffee house, whatever it might be. We don't know. It just would be generic retail space. Oops, you already saw that. Sorry. And then on the roof, we have about a 5,000-square-foot deck, and the idea here is, most of the markets we're talking about have a food service component. People would come to the market. They could go up on the roof deck and eat lunch or eat dinner or whatever. As I mentioned at the site visit, that's about as far, really, as we've talked about it. Certainly, the markets we've talked to are excited about the idea because there are... You know, it really has extraordinary views of the Riviera and back towards the harbor. Noise would be a little bit of an issue up there, but we think it would be a great conjunctive use with the market. So that's one idea of the project. So, when I first met with Bill Wright on this back in 2012, Bill gave me his vision for this property, and he is always, you know, he's very proud, frankly, of this as a gateway. He obviously participated significantly in getting the Garden Street extension, and I think was very visionary in terms of making that a boulevard extension to Cabrillo. And so he's very sensitive to what the architecture in this location wants to be, and he absolutely loves Monterey architecture. And he talked to me about the Larkin House in Monterey and how he saw that style, which is one of the three specific styles mandated by the El Pueblo Viejo as being ideal because it is... It is an architecture that evolved out of a waterfront location in California. It's very simple. It's very elegant and comfortable, and so I thought it was a great idea. I fully endorsed the concept, and so that's what we did with the corner of this project is to create that Monterey feel. So, this is our corner, and I'm going to go through views going back to this. You'll see the big red arrow as far as where the view is being taken from, and we'll just kind of walk around the architecture to understand it. So at the corner, and then moving down to that main pedestrian and vehicular entrance off Yananaali, looking kind of straight on, you can see the escalators and the elevators, and we have a cartilator in here so that the people could take their carts down the escalator, and then they would be taken back up at the elevator. And we actually, you know, have imagined that we would have additional cart storage in this area and also up at the second floor. The Monterey balconies, we see as being used for patrons of the store as well as that roof deck that I talked about. Then looking back from the east at this, you can get a sense of that entry tower element, which is also the vertical circulation, the retail that's on the left. And I've got to tell you, we've studied this, and I think we're going to continue to study. I'd be honest with you, I'm not completely pleased with the way the retail architecture here looks right now. We've looked at a lot of different options. We actually went to the Historic Landmarks Commission on this, God, two years ago? And actually, this is what we showed them at that time, so it was the same concept as far as Monterey, and they liked the project. They were actually very receptive to the idea. I think that we got other feedback, that there was a lot of Monterey, that if I carried the Monterey around to the other retail portion, maybe it was too much, and it better to let the true, authentic Monterey style be that anchor piece of the architecture on the corner and then allow it to evolve. But that's all going to continue to be studied, and I certainly appreciate your comments on that. And as we continue around, the architecture does change from the, you know, actual Monterey style to be more, you know, a simple Spanish colonial, and this, of course, is the back of the market, the back of the retail. We have some interesting elements, like the mirador that you see behind that tree. As we continue on around, it's just... It's a little bit more industrial, if you will, back-of-house, but we're introducing Santa Barbara sandstone and that sort of thing, and it seems kind of appropriate that it... This be very quiet and simple on that, on the freeway side. So now I'll just take you, and I think I can stop this along the way, a little view as we sort of fly around the building so you can get a sense of it. And I can stop this at any time, and don't hesitate to stop me, by the way, if you have any questions. For instance, from this view, this, obviously, the green band there is the bank of the channel, and at the end of the day, this view actually wouldn't be seen because there'd be all the new vegetation in that channel, so the model doesn't take advantage of that... Oops. I just pushed the wrong button. Sorry, you'll have to look at that again. I'll just let it go this time. So we're going to circle around so that we can kind of get a sense, from an active standpoint of the building, as you begin to see it from the backside, the freeway side. And it is fairly, you know, prominent as you're going southbound. It's a little less so northbound. But the sandstone elements that we've introduced, I feel, are very important on that backside. The 2008 scoping hearing that you heard about, some visual sims were done for that, which were anticipated for the EIR, so this is actually the project that was presented in that scoping hearing. It was also a market. Now, at first blush, you look at this and you think, well, gee, that kind of... That sort of complies with our policies, right, of buildings on the corner and, you know, entrance off the corner and being responsive to that. The problem with this is it, from the standpoint of a grocery store, a market, it does not work because you have to have that main entrance off of the parking lot. The majority of people coming here, even though there will be people walking from the funk zone and from the Yananaali condos and other places, the vast majority is going to come from the parking lot, and there really needs to be one point of entrance to a market at the cash registers, just like you all experienced. So, the important thing about this view really is the... And the point of this is the mountain view blockage, and that was why this visual sim was done, and this was, of course, a more refined rendering than what we have for this concept review, but I think you'll get the idea. You know, this is the massing of what we're proposing, and that was the, you know, that previous proposal. I think the Monterey style and the simple hip roof actually help to reduce the scale of the building. This portion of the architecture, this Monterey building, is 34 feet in height to the ridge, and the highest parts of the building towards the back where the loading is get up to 40 feet. And then, as Allison mentioned, the tower's taller than that. Another one of those scoping views of the previous proposal and then the scale of what we are proposing. So they are comparable, and I think this is actually a little better from the standpoint of mountain protection. And then, at our site visit, you asked that we compare this to Yananaali condos. This is a little bit stretched out, but this is the actual scale between the project and the Yananaali condos, or Villa del Mar, I guess, is the way I should really refer to it. Those buildings are right around 32 feet, 33 feet in height, and you can kind of get a sense... This is from the... The lower one is from the freeway side, and the upper one is, of course, looking along Yananaali.
Mr. Chair, may I ask, Mr. Cornell, a question here?
Sure. Okay, if you have to, we'll have questions after...
Okay, but while he's on this slide, do you have a view from the previous slide, looking, I think it would be northeast, as though we were looking at the property going up? Garden, do you have a view beyond your proposed design that shows the buildings and the viewshed as you move across the freeway? And I ask because there is a building, that's a two-story building with kind of a... And I ask because there is a building, that's a two-story building with kind of a pop-up that you can see just beyond your proposed project. I'm wondering what the relative view, would it be higher than, would it be comparable to? And it's just on the other side of the freeway. It's a Spanish-style building, and it's a...
On the other side of, of Garden?
It actually is where Montecito dead ends, I drove by it just to figure out what it is and where it is.
Oh, the office, the Jerry Beaver's Office Building, I think, is what you're thinking about. That's three stories, that would be taller than...
Like a bed-in-bath design place that's released right now. But, but it's a two-story with a pop-up, and I just wanted to see the visual relative...
I don't, I do not have that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But we can certainly come up with that.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other things that you asked about at the site visit is to kind of give us some idea of, since we're going to be talking about this creek setback, and I'm about to hand it off to Greg to give you more detail about what the plans are in terms of restoration. But just so that you can see visually, this, of course, the, the project is designed with that 25-foot setback that you can see there to the right. And the parking does come right up to that. In terms of our, of our flow, Mike Cassetti is here if you want to know anything more, and also our landscape architect. But if you, if you want to understand, basically, we're proposing green roofs, we're proposing lots of bioswales, permeable paving. So all of the water that obviously will be falling on the site will be subject to the highest level Tier 3 standards, and all of that will be cleansed prior to it entering Laguna Channel. But all the water from our site does enter into Laguna Channel. And Courtney Miller, our landscape architect, has done a wonderful job. I meant to mention, when I was going through the renderings, we had some palm trees and things that were precariously close to the, to the channel, which would not be the case. That isn't the landscaping that's being proposed there. So I apologize to Courtney for that, that I didn't accurately demonstrate the trees. But anyway, as far as that setback difference, if we were to go to 35 feet, really what would just happen is the building would shrink and the parking would move over. So you can hardly see it there, but we would lose five spaces and about 1,050 square feet if we made that move from 25 feet to 35 feet. If you move to 50 feet, you'd lose about 15 spaces, and you'd lose over 2,600 square feet of, of area. But the layout would, would become the same. If I went to 100 feet, you can see what that means. And actually, at this point, I'd probably get into a little trouble with my turn, with my truck turning. It, it probably, you know, requires a change and makes this plan infeasible. But I think the important thing relative to the 100-foot setback, which is, which I think is an extreme that at least has been thrown out here, is that when you apply that 100-foot setback to this site, then you're going to apply that 100-foot by precedent to the, all of the sites adjoining this channel. And frankly, at the end of the day, that is impractical because you know what? You will completely thwart any redevelopment of, of anything adjacent to that channel because it, you can see the amount of, of buildings and uses that that removes. So with that, I want to pass it on to Greg McCowen, who can give you some thoughts about what his plans are for the restoration and the, and, and on the 25-foot setback.
Thank you, Brian. Good afternoon, Chair Thompson, Commissioners. My name is Greg McCowen, I'm a principal ecologist with Arcadis. I've been doing consulting biology here for about 15 years on the central coast. I also have Mary Carroll with us, she's our senior restoration ecologist and botanist. If we get down to talking about how restoration will be implemented in the plant ecology, I may ask to defer to her on that. But I'll, I'll give you an overview. What was Arcadis asked to do? We were asked to come in and look at a, conduct a census of species and habitat assessment of the site, look at the wildlife and botanical resources. We used wildlife biologists and botanists from our staff. Incidentally, it's the same team that we use where we work for the city at the wastewater treatment plant on the habitat restoration project that is proposed at the swale there, the drain. And also the same group that we've used for a number of your bridge projects, the city's bridge projects that we've supported the ecological work for. And so we, we looked at that, what did we find? You know, the current use of the site, the industrial site's essentially devoid of ecological value in its current state. So focusing on the creek and that, it is a highly degraded system, it's dominated by non-native invasive plant species. Functionally, it's quite isolated, you know, you've got Highway 101 up there, you've got concrete, everything upstream of that. So there's not really good dispersit, disperse, dispersion opportunities for wildlife outside the channel itself as it currently exists. And it's a very industrial setting, both at our site and in the surrounding area. What's proposed, what did we find? There's no direct impacts proposed. And that's relevant as it applies to a lot of the different policies that we have in the city. But there's no bridge, there's no bank work, there's no outfall culvert, the storm drainage that was mentioned will go into existing inlets and things after it leaves the site. So there's no work proposed in the riparian area or the creek. So we don't have any direct impact to that area, it's, it's avoided. Indirect impacts, you know, you talk about noise and lighting, we looked at some of those things. They're always a concern with development projects. And this site, you know, with noise, for example, with the 101, 24 hours a day going by, you have a really high ambient noise situation there. Not to mention crushing rock and all the industrial things that are going on, on there now. Lighting is always a concern for that sort of scenario. We would require, or I would, I would suggest anyway, that require the light be pooled down, that the corridor be protected from light at night. I think your policies already require that anyway, so I don't think that would be a surprise to anyone. Maybe most of interest to you, from what I understand, is kind of the buffer concept. So there's a couple of things I wanted to just make sure everybody is sort of clear on as we look at that. As you probably already know, riparian corridors are, they're called that, they're defined by the presence of water. The hydrology dictates a certain group of plants, and the range from how wide it is is dictated by the availability of water. And in this part of California, we have a lot of small drainages like this where you have, you know, this has obviously been manipulated, it's been channelized and built up around it. But if you go and look at other comparatively sized drainages around, you'll see that there's a real hard line from a riparian corridor to an upland area. The water just doesn't stretch that far, in terms of its impact on plants and things like that. So what's currently proposed is to double the width of the riparian corridor. From my vantage, far more importantly than making it bigger, is the improvement. Right now, it's weeds and palm trees and just not good native stuff. So what we would be looking to do is create a strong, healthy, native riparian corridor. We also could install, like we're doing at the wastewater treatment plant, some basking sites. I did notice there was a site, a comment about the buffer creating, a bigger buffer creating more basking sites. In general, pond turtles, the, the basking sites are at water. They like to, when somebody comes up, they jump off the basking site and into the water. So the increased buffer doesn't really give you more basking sites, I just saw that comment somewhere along the line. But making it a better community, a better riparian corridor is good for wildlife, it's good for plants, better biodiversity, higher functional value for the resources. I, I just wanted to make clear, if you're thinking of buffers in your minds, what I mentioned before about the width and the impact, if we did a much wider buffer, we could do a native restoration there. But I want to make sure everybody understands, it's not going to be green willow trees and things out a long distance. It's going to go out as far as the water will let us go, and then it's going to be grass and shrubs and scrub, set up chaparral, or more likely a coastal scrub or a grassland community. So it wouldn't be a big chunk of riparian, because I just don't think the hydrology is there to support that. Also, there was comments about a trail. We go back and forth on the trail from, from our group. We want the public to know about the native resources. We have proposed interpretive signages. I'm always in favor of keeping people out, and I think some of the commenters that were put in there also had that same opinion. So there's not a trail proposed at this time. And just wrapping up, you know, what I'm looking here is, do we have a net environmental benefit? And, and in this case, you certainly do. You have, if this proposed project moves forward and the restoration goes on, you're going to double the width of the riparian corridor, you're going to vastly improve the quality of that resource. You're also going to get it on the other bank, the opposite bank, which is, the city's yard is up there, and it looks to me to be heavily and aggressively treated to keep free of vegetation. I don't know what that's all about, but we would go up to the property limit, you can see the red dotted lines, we would restore all the way over there. So that would be a significant benefit. You know, there were some of those policies that were mentioned, 12 and 19 and 21. You know, those policies and the language, as I read it, are really strongly focused on protect, maintain, preserve. That's all happening. They talk about enhance and restore, that's happening. You know, if you start talking about, well, okay, let's make it bigger, even in policy, it has caveats, like as feasible, as appropriate type of caveat. So I think it was recognized even in your current language and the proposed future language to sort of, we want you to protect it, we want you to restore it and enhance it. Making it bigger, great, but, you know, balance that, is at least how I read that. You know, that does fit in nicely with the creeks division proposal, the things that they're doing, improving habitat quality along this, it's a short little section down to the ocean, but everything we can do is valuable. So I appreciate that. And as I say, so double the size of it will improve the quality, will protect water quality, avoid the indirect impacts of light, noise, that sort of thing, and avoid direct impacts entirely. And so we can, I'm here to answer questions, Mary's here, but that's a high-speed overview for you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll probably have some questions for you before this is over. Is that it from the applicant? Okay. Anything else, Brian?
Thank you.
Standby for questions. Okay. First, we'll have questions for the staff and the applicant from the commission, who has questions that they want to ask. Commissioner Pujo.
Thank you. First, it'd be helpful to me and maybe some others to have a quick, like, bullet point set of guidelines about the permitting aspects of the specific plan, particularly in response or following up to the applicant's presentation. I think it was Ms. Allen that was talking about how this is one portion of the specific plan, and some portions, like the Garden Street improvements were basically called, I don't know officially or unofficially, pre-mitigation for terms of environmental review, and that there's other pieces to this specific plan. This is one, I guess, phase of the build-out. But how does that affect the way that ultimately the city and the commission look at the overall scope of the project?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, this is one aspect of that specific plan, and phased development was something that was anticipated even at that time. There wasn't EIR done for the specific plan when it was adopted. As you can imagine, things have changed quite a bit since then. The roads were put in, that was the first phase. The city has recognized that as being the first phase of the implementation. How that affects, it's never officially been called pre-mitigation, and in that sense, we would still need to do a environmental review. And if there are Class 1 impacts, those still need to be considered, and a statement of overriding considerations would need to be adopted if that were the case. However, those roads have been put in, and that was an important piece of the specific plan. So those would certainly be taken into consideration, you know, at that time, if that is in fact where we get to through an environmental review process.
So as a follow-up to that, in terms of SEQA, environmental review baseline for this project, is it what we see out there right now in terms of existing current, like, traffic trips or, you know, biology or any of the other topics? Is it just for that one three-point-something acre site and slice of time of what we see today? It doesn't factor in the past, is that correct?
That is correct. We would be looking at a baseline of whenever we scope the document.
So your determination of like the level of impacts in your environmental review will be based on what we've got today?
That is correct.
On-site, as is today?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's helpful, thank you. I may have some other questions later, but maybe I'll pass it on to other commissioners at this point, and have some other more detailed questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan.
The quickest release of questions in a long time. I don't know that I'm ready, but I'll make an effort. George, glad to see you. Come on up. Happy to see somebody from the creeks. Glad we made you put a tie on today. So at that site, I know creeks put up, but fence because of one time, the special no-climb fence because of one time, there were people scaling the fence and, and bothering the water quality. And I'm concerned about the site. So between both the water quality in the creek and that site in general, could you tell me a little bit about the water quality and the groundwater quality, what you know about it?
Okay, Chair Thompson, Commissioner Jordan, I, I'm not an expert on the water quality portion, I'm a little more of an expert on the restoration, but I'll try to do my best with that. We did put up a fence a few years ago because we did have issues with trash and people sleeping and using that portion of Laguna Channel mostly from the labor line. So we put up a pretty big fence that, that you can't get through or over. And so that was pretty successful in reducing a lot of that trash and those uses down in the creek, so that did help improve water quality. We have done some sampling of that site and have, have still found human marker in that location. That's DNA human marker, so that means there is some source, but not conclusive, you know, not every sample. So it's definitely degraded the water quality there, but we don't for sure know what the source is, or if it really is kind of, you know, just sporadic hits of that, or a more serious, you know, issue with...
And then do you know anything about the groundwater quality in relation to that site at all?
No, I do not have any information on that.
I just know that area is a problem. So in concept, you know, you're just kind of looking at some pretty drawings, the issue of retention and then eventual migration to the, to the creek as the, as the way the stormwater would move versus onsite retention and treatment before it goes to the creek, which would have the greater bang for the buck to keep the groundwater quality, or the, I'm assuming, I'm just going to assume the groundwater quality in that area is questionable too, because I know there's some areas right around that site that are actually EPA sites.
Right, there is contamination issues there, yeah.
And so I, I don't know, that's about as far as I know on this subject, but is there merit to retention, to pushing retained stormwater down into the groundwater that already has an issue, that would move it around, or maybe not, maybe it would improve it? And then the second point would be, is there also merit to moving retained stormwater into the creek without treating, or should it be pre-treated before it goes into the creek?
Well, I'll answer your second question first. I would say that if you are going to put it into the creek, you'd want to treat it prior to putting it in the creek. And some of the stormwater BMPs allow that, they don't, they're not necessarily infiltration, they treat it, and then they direct that drainage into the channel. Your first question, I'm not really a groundwater expert, and I know that it's, it's pretty difficult to, to try to, for me to guess what the contamination issues there are underground, and that's very complicated even for geologists, so I'm not going to try and answer that.
Okay, and then in the staff report, there was mention made, and the consultant talked about it too, on, with the turtles and turtle access and basking, and that, that creek bank right now is pretty vertical. And so I assume that's one of the reasons you're saying we'd like 100 feet, because that would then reduce the, the, the bank verticality, right? That would, that would, but there's no turtles there now, and I'm just curious, so you want 100, they're offering 25, what is actually a distance that would allow a ramp for a turtle to get up out of the creek and bask if that's really an issue? I mean, does it need to be 100? Can it be 50? Can it be 30?
I'll, I'll try and answer that. So yeah, there's the southwestern pond turtle, it's a special status species, that means it's not endangered or threatened, but it's kind of on the edge there, so they're watching it. In other words, the resource agencies are watching that species to try to see, you know, would that, is that going to, is it, are the numbers low enough to consider it an endangered species and then put that extra layer of, of regulation on it? But for, for pond turtles themselves, they are the only freshwater native turtle in California, so they are kind of a unique species in that. There are existing turtles in the Laguna Channel as far as I know, or at least they were the last time we did surveys, when the city was doing some vegetation and sediment work in that channel. So there is, as far as I know, still an existing population. We haven't done a survey recently, and I don't, maybe the biologists could answer that if they've done one, but, so they, as far as I know, do exist. But a larger buffer, the biologist was correct in saying that they don't need that upper terrace area for basking in the sun, they bask in the sun close to the water. terrace area for basking in the sun, they bask in the sun close to the water and then jump off to escape, that's kind of how they escape predators. What they do need that upper area for is breeding. Pond turtles typically crawl out of their channels in order to lay their eggs, because when it floods, they don't want the eggs flooded and they don't themselves want to get washed away in a flood. So they'll travel very far actually from their actual channels, up to a mile, to lay their eggs. And that extra area of a buffer will provide them a location where they could crawl out and then do that. And it doesn't have to be heavily vegetated as was stated before, the riparian quarter may, you may transition to some lower growing plants as you get further away from the riparian quarter due to the groundwater. But anyway, that's all good for the turtle and that's what they do. In terms of the steepness of the bank, it also allows you to reduce the slope of that bank a little bit to make it easier for the turtles to crawl out, because right now it is very steep. They do climb very, very steep banks and I haven't, I'm not an expert enough to say that they could or couldn't climb the existing slope there, but anything you can do to reduce the slope would obviously make it better for the turtles.
So I get, and I get the 100, because the 100 always comes up, but it could be.
Reducing a slope.
Could be 50 would be a gain also too, if we reduce the slope.
Yes.
If the turtle can get out now on a steep vertical bank, he could certainly get out better on a 50-foot.
Yeah, and then an area for them to crawl around and dig their burrows and lay their eggs is important.
Then there was a mention in the staff report that this area is a mapped habitational area. It also then has a wildlife movement corridor, and then it goes right into a discussion on the coastal act reference to what is in the coastal act called an environmentally sensitive habitat. And then staff, which I think is your part of the report, actually then talks about some of the burdens of development in an environmentally sensitive habitat. But I don't see anything in the report that actually defines this area as an environmentally sensitive habitat. So is it or are we just using that as a, as a reference for discussion?
I'm going to let her answer.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Jordan, that's actually a very difficult question to answer and it's something that our staff is looking into as part of the local coastal plan update. They've been spending a lot of time on it and they're going to continue researching it and discussing it with coastal staff in terms of defining exactly what constitutes environmentally sensitive habitat areas throughout the city.
So right now it would be more of a consideration rather than a direct nexus between policy and what's on the ground?
I think that's a fair statement.
Okay. And then same kind of question, there's a, a California Coastal Commission attachment and that talks about wetlands. And it infers that this is a wetland, but you can go to their website too and see the definition of the wetland, which isn't in our staff report. And so same question, has this particular stretch of the channel been officially defined or does it, does it meet the definition of a wetland as found in that referenced staff attachment?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Jordan, I would need to take a look real quickly and see if I can find that information for you. I believe it was in the habitat report that was prepared.
So there's an attachment that you put with the staff report, but it talks about the way you treat wetlands, it's policy on wetlands, but I don't see any in the staff report that defines this as a wetland or says it's a wetland. And I have on my iPad, I have the definition of wetland from their documents, I could share that with you later, but I guess, you know, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we load this up with references that maybe the nexus isn't direct, it's more of a consideration rather than a direct nexus. Thank you. And then, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, Greg, come on, can I, I have a question for you. So I agree with you that, you know, that there'll be a net environmental benefit when we're done. What I, what I question is, one thing you said is as part of your study, there's no direct impacts. And I'm just interested, what's the benchmark for that? So if you have, if you have a channel that's crap and you're going to put something next to it and it doesn't make it any worse, that's kind of like no direct impacts, but, so is the benchmark what it is that's there right now or is the benchmark what it should be, not what it's allowed to degrade to?
Sure, Commissioner, or Chair Thompson, Commissioner Jordan, the, I think I'm sort of using the SEQA sort of thresholds. We typically talk about direct and indirect impacts. In simplest terms, direct, you touch it. I'm going to go drive a bulldozer on it, I'm going to get out with an excavator and put a pipe in it, I'm going to cut the tree down, I'm going to actually touch it, I'm going to, I'm going to hammer that thing. Indirect impacts would be, like I say, noise, where the noise isn't actually changing the existing structure of the creek, but it might influence a bird that's there. So the noise next door, maybe that bird flies away, so that, that would fall in that indirect impact. We didn't actually go cut the tree down and I didn't go poke the bird with a sharp stick and have it fly away. So that, that's the difference that I'm talking about in direct and indirect.
Really has no bearing to kind of my use of direct impact on whether you're affecting what's on the ground there, it's, or reflecting what could or should have been on the ground versus what's there on the ground now. It's really just a, it's more of a nuts and bolts thing and you're going to go out, here's what you're going to do or not do and that's, that's all it causes.
I think so. It falls in place on a regulatory side, so you don't need a permit if you don't touch the land. For example, from Cal Fish and Wildlife and the Drainage, if you have the Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Program or the Army Corps, there are permits required for those things I talked about, if we were going to put a culvert in, those things all need permitting. If you're not in there, you don't need a permit for it.
Okay.
So that's how I'm kind of breaking those two up.
Thanks. Then Brian, I think I just have one or, one or two questions for you and I'm done. On your site plan, you have, that's it, you have some nice little arrows on the right-hand side and in the center showing how your drainage will work.
Yes.
And I'm sure you're just highlighting that you're going to get things into little bioswales and stuff, but I don't understand what happens on the other, the other half of the hardscape going around the back and the north side.
Well, actually, all along the back end actually is a bioswale, so that landscaping that's along the 101 side would also be a bioswale. We don't have.
It'd be pushing north as you, it would drain north there?
It would, it would drain, it would drain basically west to east.
Okay.
And then down through that, you know, basically along that 25-foot setback and be filtered with that, in that direction, does that make sense?
Yep.
I also wanted to mention, by the way, in the discussion about the taking, I have not heard heretofore that we were talking about taking the creek bank back. I mean, we obviously saw that this is a channel that goes all the way, so I'm not sure what setting this creek bank back does between 101 and Yan'anoli, because it's, it's immediately constrained again at the Yan'anoli Bridge. So I don't think that's been part of what staff has been asking for.
I think every time we generally talk about habitat or restoration projects, we always talk about a lessening of the vertical creek side.
Okay.
So I mean, so if you're, if you're not thinking that's part of a restoration program, I think you should be clear on that probably, because I, I just jumped to that assumption.
Well, I would, I would defer to Greg on that as far as what the proper, you know, thing to do here in this case is, because obviously we have, you know, this is just one small piece of the channel.
Yep, agreed. But the first piece, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks. And then I just have one last question for staff and there's some references. So there's some references in two different sections of staff report, one on page five that, that talks about the potential for use of recycled water for landscaping. And then on page seven, in the engineering section, it says it's required. And I'm just curious, do we have access near this site right now for supply of recycled water or would that have to be brought in somehow? Another pipeline.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Jordan, I believe there is pipeline that is near the site. I don't have a map showing exactly where those pipelines are, but we're very close to the plant as well, so.
That could be a consideration, just to consider, right?
Mr. Cassisi just said it is in Yan'anoli.
Okay, super. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'll start with staff. Ms. DeBusk, I, on the one hand, and we have it on the slide here, there's a reference to the far right side of the property as a channel, that's Laguna Channel. And there is that same reference in some of the documentation we've received, but what is somewhat confusing to me, so I would appreciate the clarification from you, is there's also reference to creek. So I, I think it's important for all the considerations we're talking about in terms of setbacks, restoration and so forth, to not only clearly understand the definitions of channel versus creek, but then also any policies that would apply same or differently to channel versus creek. Can you help me with that? And I can tell you, for example, on page six of 19 of the pre-app review team comments, there are many references to creek. Is that the right page? Hold on one second. Well, and on other pages, and yet on page two of the staff report, it starts out by referencing this as channel.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, the name of the creek is Laguna Channel, but it is a creek. And that's how staff is defining it, it's a blue line creek, all of our creek setbacks would apply.
So do we have, can you point to a policy, to coastal act, coastal commission guidance, anything on that that would differentiate considerations of a channel versus creek when it comes to setback and habitat restoration?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, I'm not aware of any, however, Laguna Channel is one of the creeks identified in the city's local coastal plan implementation program. It's, it's part of the creek guidelines and so it is specifically identified as such.
Okay. My next question, when we think about the design, circulation on the property as well as traffic circulation impacts from the property, off the property, I wanted to go back to the number of square feet. And I've seen three different numbers for the market on the second floor. So on the one hand, in the staff reports, I wanted to see if we can tighten this up a bit as we get to looking at totality of square feet. On the first page of the staff report, it says 37,348 feet. Then, and I appreciate the email you sent us, Ms. DeBusk, with a, an overview of all of the major markets in Santa Barbara, and it shows that this one is at 37,300 and yet I thought I heard Mr. Cornell mentioned 30, excuse me, 37,300, but then I thought I heard Mr. Cornell mentioned 36,000. So is this, is it in flux because the design is still in flux?
Well, no, I just, it is, it is 36,178 or something like that, you've got the number.
That's closer to the.
I was referring just to the second floor.
Yes.
We included in the market square footage, the loading area down on the ground floor also. So that's where the larger number.
I see.
But when I was showing it on the screen, I was just referring to that floor plate at the second floor.
I see, I see, okay, very good. My next question is on page two of the pre-app review team comments. First, I was wondering the, the reference to a pedestrian trail. I'm not sure exactly where that might be referenced in all of our materials, but Ms. DeBusk, I was wondering if you or any other city staff has a position or a recommendation on that. I do have some thoughts, which I'll get to later in my comments today, but I wanted to hear staff's position on creating a new pedestrian trail along the Laguna Channel once the habitat is restored. And we had a reference to that in, in the team's comment today.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, staff has not discussed that specifically. However, I don't know that this would be a location where that's something that staff feels is needed from a circulation standpoint. The applicant had mentioned they've been discussing whether or not to include that, so we would come back with a recommendation, you know, based on their final proposal. But I think the size of the setback also plays into that, of course. With a 25-foot setback, we would not want a pedestrian trail within that setback.
Okay. Still on this page, again, page two of the document that I referenced, you know, it speaks to water quality and that prompts me to ask about the, the city-owned property immediately adjacent to the right. We don't have that on the screen, but on, in your PowerPoint, Ms. DeBusk, we can see, it doesn't designate this or identify it as a city-owned property to the right, I don't know if you have that. So my question here is, first of all, I don't know what all the uses are of that city property, but I did notice that there is a pipe that's embedded in the ground, starting on the city property, that then resurfaces on the applicant's property and whatever's coming out of that pipe goes directly into the channel. So I want to understand all of that relative to what's happening with resources flowing into the channel and what's appropriate to obligate this applicant to do versus the city. And also if the city has any plans to cooperate with the applicant to improve the larger area beyond the applicant's property line, given that pipe, and anything else pertaining to both water and soil contaminants.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, we did a quick check to try and determine where that pipe was coming from. It looks as though it leads to a drain that is in the city yard about in this location. The drain is partially obscured by shelving, so it's not something, it's not a washout area of any kind, but it is a drain that would take runoff into the creek channel. That pipe may very well outlet onto the applicant's property. We don't know until we can determine exactly where that property line is in that location, but we would certainly work with the applicant and try and resolve that if there are any issues there.
Well, when I look at the 25 feet to the, I don't want to call it the east side, the 25-foot delimeter of the, the property line, I believe, on the east side of the channel, so it's over the top of the bank, it's, you know, up, up beyond the bank, and that pipe is coming, literally coming out, is sticking out into the channel, quite visible, several feet. So I don't mean to debate the, the physical aspect or the legality of it, but it is clear to anybody just standing there looking at it, that what starts on the city property to the right and is embedded so you can walk over it and so forth, is actually coming out into the channel, which I understand is the applicant's property. Everything in the channel is within the applicant's property line, boundaries, correct? I mean, this whole stretch.
I don't believe it, everything, it does vary a little bit, but in general, yes, I would say the top of the bank is within the applicant's property.
Okay, well, I, I thought, so this is, this is going to be helpful. I thought that from Yan'anoli and Mr. Cornell, maybe you could, from Yan'anoli back to wherever, I want to say dead ends, there's a Caltrans culvert back there, which I'm going to ask you about next. Here we go. So can you just outline?
You can clearly see the property line.
The red dashed?
The red dashed, and it is, it is well to the east of the top of the bank. So I believe that you are correct, that that pipe is well within our property, the right property, and because it comes out in the middle of the, of the bank, exiting basically to the, to the west.
Okay. So obviously not today, but should this project come back to the planning, well, I guess it will at some point, I would want to know more information about that in terms of environmental quality and issues to be considered, since we're talking about improving a highly degraded area environmentally. Okay. Let me just keep going here. My next question is on page six of the pre-app review team comments document. So I'm just wondering at what point, and do we need to consider today, you know, what point will a full environmental impact report or a negative declaration, whatever the right environmental path would be, to fully analyze? Because it seems to me at this concept level today, it's so preliminary to really understand what all of the, the totality of potential environmental impacts, before I feel like we're, there's a lot of guesstimation that's going on because we don't even have a final design and so forth. Would you agree with me on that? We're just sort of talking around what could be a set of environmental considerations and impacts?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, that is correct, and the reason. Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, that is correct, and the reason being is that the applicant's design depends so much on the creek setback, that they want feedback on that before investing any time in additional environmental review. The process is that they would submit an application to the city, we would review it for completeness. Once the application is deemed complete, we would start environmental review.
Okay, so on this page, I'm on page six still, and I'm going, it crosses over to page seven. Discussion about setback and some reports that have been provided. I would appreciate staff's comments on the applicability, the reasonability and the applicability of these various setbacks that are referenced here, and they, they take place, or they, they are extracted from studies that are done in other cities. So you have a city of Portland referenced and other geographic areas. So I see, you know, in one study, a recommendation of two-hundred-and-fifty feet, another is a hundred-and-fifty feet, one-fifty to three-hundred. Then I'm looking at page seven, one-hundred-foot setback is also consistent with the plan Santa Barbara. The struggle I have, and so I'm really looking for staff to, to have a larger discussion with us about this, is we have guidance of a minimum of twenty-five feet in our general plan, and I'm not seeing concrete, a concrete rationale, or, yeah, I guess so, a rationale for moving from twenty-five feet to, let's say, one-hundred. When it says here in the second paragraph on page seven, a one-hundred-foot setback is also consistent. Well, I don't really know what the word consistent means. We have a guidance for minimum of two, of twenty-five, and then we're jumping to one-hundred, and I don't know, and maybe Mr. Vincent wants to comment, but it seems to me like from twenty-five to one-hundred, I don't know how that stands the test of consistent to me. So I need some help with that.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, regarding the setbacks, your staff report has an attachment, it's Exhibit D. It consists of the creek guidelines that are within the implementation plan for the LCP. Those guidelines identify the central drainage channel, which is also known as Laguna Creek, and specifies that a minimum setback of twenty-five-foot setback shall apply to developments adjacent to the central drainage channel. Above that delineation of twenty-five feet is that the following standards will be used by the city in reviewing development proposals adjacent to creeks. Although these guidelines will apply to all creekside developments, each project must be evaluated on a site-specific basis due to varying conditions of the site and the environmental impact of the proposed project. With those in mind, I would recommend that the commission consider a minimum twenty-five-foot setback from the top of bank of this creek, subject to increased, increased distance of setback as determined by environmental review, which has yet to occur.
Okay, so I guess for me, you know, it's the yet to occur, it's yet another unknown. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to that on my comments, I think. Thank you. So let me keep going with my questions, then, on page eight of the same document. I heard a comment about shopping carts in the course of the presentations today. Do we have anything in our documents in terms of the site plan or some other subsection pertaining to shopping carts? Because I think there are certain ways that other, other large grocery stores in town are handling the constraining of shopping carts to a property without it becoming a nuisance or, you know, visual blight. So, a shopping cart area, right, a storage area or a holding area, Mr. Cornell?
Yeah, and I don't know whether we weren't clear on our plans, but.
Okay.
With my weak pointer here, but see if we can even find, find, well, forget it. Between the escalator.
Walk up to the.
Between the escalator and the elevator, you see the escalator on the left and the elevator on the right?
Do it on our plan.
There's a little sliver there, there's a slot, that's.
Okay.
So that's the escalator, thank you, Greg. Right next to that, to the right, is, is a shopping cart area, so that people basically can go there, they can grab a shopping cart, and they can go up the elevator. And there is also then, oh, thank you, of course, now I don't need it.
Yeah, there it is. There it is.
And then I'm going to go through that little turnaround here of my trucks, because it's the fastest way to do that. Isn't that fun? And then we have additional shopping cart storage that is basically up in this area in the same place. So I believe there's ample shopping cart storage. The tenants ultimately are going to be most concerned about this, and we're going to have to accommodate it, so I don't think it's a big deal.
That's the storage component. Have you considered, I could rest this in my comments, but let me ask you as a question. Have you considered incorporating or utilizing the new state-of-the-art shopping carts that are restrained physically from moving beyond a certain perimeter of the property so that this doesn't become an issue for?
I have not, but I'd certainly, when we get into that detail.
Okay, if you could make a note of that, I think, yeah. Okay. We've certainly seen that around town, and we've seen the opposite of what happens around town when that doesn't occur. All right. Now, in terms of the site plan, again, this is on page eight, and we've been asked by staff to comment on the site plan. There hasn't been much discussion yet, maybe some of my colleagues will touch on this. Could we put the, the circulation plan back up, and you were talking about the delivery So the ingress and egress for the entire property, Mr. Cornell, is the two, the two cuts I see there, only on Yan and Ollie, correct?
Correct.
And so do you have a sense of delivery truck hours vis-à-vis the circulation to minimize both hazards for the users of the property, as well as just those driving on Yan and Ollie, you know, at all hours?
Well.
It's a pretty busy street right now, as we saw when we were even there in the morning on the site visit.
Most markets get their deliveries early in the morning. I mean, that's, that's pretty much the standard. You're not going to necessarily be able to limit smaller, like bread trucks and that kind of thing, but the large trucks are all usually queued in the early morning hours to load the store for the coming day. So, and that's all scheduled, you know, by the markets. So that's, that would be, I believe, the predominant case.
Okay. So I would ask staff, if you could just make a note, since I knew this project was coming to us, I've been observing around town, the delivery truck patterns of many of our larger grocery stores, and some of them actually have deliveries in the middle of the day and are blocking public right-of-way and creating problems on the street, let alone for those who are using the property. So if you could make a note that whenever this project comes back, I'll be looking very closely, and maybe with a new traffic study, we can make sure that that's mitigated or minimized to the greatest degree possible. Going on to page nine of the same document. B, which is at the top of the page, references bicycle parking, and staff says, we suggest that you explore a bicycle room for all of the employees of the site. Ms. Debusk, could you talk a little bit about what that means, room versus locked cage? And we've, we've entertained this on a number of other projects, and I think I've personally seen where it's worked better or, or less effective, and so I'd, I'd like some more detail from you on that.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, that was a recommendation from the Transportation Planning Division.
Okay.
And so I don't have information on why they preferred a room to a cage or some other secured bike parking area.
Is that a loose reference, Mr. Cornell, and kind of details to be explored?
Well, no, I mean, we actually show this whole square here, which is twenty by twenty, so it's the size of a two-car garage, as bicycle parking, and we show another little area here. So those, that actually could be a room, or it could be caged, it could be completely secured, and could be designated specifically for employees. And we also have, you know, by virtue of the setback here, I mean, there is a considerable setback, and actually the setback, the required setback is to the face of the Colonnade, so that's kind of another nice thing about the Monterey style, is the building mass is actually back of that arcade, and there would be additional room under there, I think, for, possibly for public bike parking. But I'm confident there's plenty of room on the site to accommodate both.
Okay. And do you have any plans to discuss with some of your larger grocery market colleagues, shall we call them, business partners, kind of what's worked and what's not, since there's quite a range in town of bicycle cages that are currently effective and that are not? And I'll just leave it at that, since this is a concept review, make a note of that to explore. Thank you. And then, still on page nine, staff has a comment down under number twelve, which is excess parking. We anticipate design changes that will reduce the parking numbers based on staff comments in this letter. So, Ms. Debusk, could you talk to me a little bit about what these design changes are that would reduce parking demand?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, perhaps Brian can point to the area, but it's the parking spaces that are within the loading area, as he mentioned during his presentation, that staff would not consider to be parking spaces because during certain times of the day, they may be obscured by the loading activity. So while they may work for employee parking from a technical standpoint, we wouldn't count them towards the official parking of the site because they would not be able to be maneuvered in and out of at all times. But they may still serve a function for the use.
It's really just, it's really just these parking spaces here. They had some other, you know, I'll just finish up, as far as minor concerns, they don't like to see parking lots that dead-end, and want to be sure that a vehicle can turn around in the event it, it can't find a space. We talked about that relative to this little area. My argument is somebody coming in here and circulating around and going out, that they'll be able to see if any of these spaces are filled before they got too deep in to have a backing-out problem. So we, that's just, that's something we're debating with, with each other. But those, there was a space here that was close to the truck maneuvering, and so that was another concern. So it was just a few specific spaces they had concerns about.
Okay. And then, Ms. Debusk, on this same topic, you know, we talk about over-parking, under-parking pretty regularly here at the Planning Commission. And where it comes to groceries in particular, is there, are there any, is there any new thinking from staff about how to estimate, maybe using a more improved formula than perhaps had been used sometime in the past with other certain grocery sites that a number of the Planning Commissioners have remarked about from time to time are severely under-parked? The Trader Joe's on Upper De La Vina is one that we continue to reference. You know, there's nothing negative about Trader Joe's, it just is what it is. So I'm wondering how we decide that a grocery of this size is actually appropriately parked, not just any commercial enterprise, but a grocery of this size, especially given the matrix that you've given us in terms of what's happening elsewhere in town at the comparably-sized groceries?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, we use our standard parking ratio of one space per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The city does not have a separate parking calculation for a grocery store. However, one of the comments in our letter was that if the applicant believes that the demand for parking would be higher for a grocery store, they can certainly, you know, submit that information, whether it's ITE parking demand rates or studies of local grocery stores in particular, to determine if our rate is, you know, not quite high enough to actually meet the demand that they anticipate.
So I see Mr. Schell is here. Is that something, Mr. Schell, you're going to be, are you here with the applicant team?
Good afternoon. Scott Schell with ATE. Yeah, I saw that comment in the staff report, and if we do come up with a parking supply that is in excess of code, we would be providing that sort of study as part of the application.
Is there a site, Ms. Debusk also, is there any kind of a site-specific overlay of consideration on that, that formula you just referenced? Since not, you know, not every neighborhood, not every property is, is identical in terms of parking and traffic considerations?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, there are different areas of the city that do have different parking requirements. For example, the downtown, the Central Business District, has a different requirement. Also, the SD-two overlay in the Upper State Street area has different parking requirements. But in general, it's based on the zone, and it's not different, or it's based on the use, pardon me, and it's not different throughout the city.
Okay, so the three zone, zoning designations for this property, do they influence any different kind of a formula when we come to having sufficient parking, the M-one, SP-two, SD-three? Or is it the one-two, which, the ratio you just provided?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, it is that, that ratio that's in our parking ordinance, correct?
One to two-fifty, okay. I think I'm almost at the end of my questions here. I'll leave that for later. Excuse me, I do have them designated, I have to go through this. Ah, yes, the deck, page thirteen of the same document, so it refers to the deck. I know we're very early on a concept review, however, the use, and here's staff references the use, the hours of use, the lighting, all of that, but I'm primarily interested in the use and the hours of use, could have a significant impact on parking, traffic circulation and traffic impacts. So, Mr. Cornell, perhaps you could speak to the, at this time, the proposed uses or conceived of uses for that roof, that roof deck?
As I mentioned, as I mentioned in my presentation, really the thought is that it's a place for the, the market clients to go, to take their sandwich, or their pizza, or their salad, or whatever, and that it would be a place to eat. So it would be like an outdoor patio, but up on the roof. It obviously is going to have great mountain views, it's going to have views back to the harbor. It, you know, it is very possible that a tenant would want to be able to have a special event, you know, wine tasting or something up on that deck. And so I think that would have to be, we would have to articulate more precisely what that use would be. We'd certainly be interested hearing from you about what your concerns would be about that rooftop deck, but I think it clearly is an amenity that we think would be a great thing for the tenant.
Well, that's why I wanted to open this up, and I'm certainly hoping my colleagues explore this too, because the views would be spectacular, or will be spectacular, and I think it will be very attractive for events. And so that leads me to ask Mr. Vincent, so if they do want to use this, want to design it and use it for special events, what, does that trigger a CUP? What are we looking at? Or any other, any other policy tool?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I, I can't answer that until the applicant tells us what they intend to do.
And so if it's for a wine tasting event, that one of their first-level commercial tenants is a private wine tasting?
That sounds like a use that's ancillary to, to the proposed use. You know, if you have the, you have that kind of use already occurring in stores, that, you know, retail stores have events to promote the products that they already sell. That's happening at Bevmo, and I, you know, and that happens every, almost every day of the week at Bevmo. So it's, that's occurring as a, as an integral part of a retail experience in lots of locations. And, I mean, maybe the experiences that the Commissioners have had with those uses in other places might inform further conditions, but that, and it's a common practice of retail.
So I'm not sure, between Mr. Cornell and staff, Ms. Debusk, at what point in the evolution of this project might you need to, to really put pencil to paper and decide what the scope of events might be? Because, for example, if beyond what Mr. Vincent just described, it's going to be such an attractive venue, that I could even seeing it being a nice revenue generator for the property owner to offer to outside, utilize, I don't know what it would be, outside parties, so to speak, and that's what I'm wondering, what that, would that would trigger?
We will, we will be sure, I think this is a good line of questioning, and we'll be sure and be clear in our project description when we do apply what exactly it is. I think we wanted certainly your feedback on the appropriateness of the use. It's only going to be open, it will be controlled by the tenant, not by the property owner. So it ultimately will be part of their lease. It's going to be open during their business hours and not beyond. That I can say for sure. There's not going to be weddings there, you know, religious events or whatever, it's just going to be, you know, something that is ancillary to the, to the market function.
Some markets are open very late, and then we have the issue of there's a noise factor, a lighting factor.
Well, we're thinking, I mean, the latest would probably be ten, ten PM is going to be the latest this market would be open. I think that's the latest, most markets would stay open.
Okay. And I think that's it for my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the first creek setback slide, the last. On the first creek setback slide, the last item, Sensitive Species and Habitat Report 2015 concludes setback, and I assume that's the 25 feet, is adequate. What were the standards or guidelines used that came to that conclusion?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Lodge, perhaps it would make sense for Mr. McGowan to respond to that, because it was his report.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Lodge, Greg McGowan. So when I'm looking at it, it has to do with the functional value, looking at where we are today and the resources that are supported in that drainage, in the context of the 101 and everything else that's going on there. Doubling the width of the current riparian corridor is adequately protective for the resources that are in there now, from my advantage. But that was how I was looking at it, is it's not a, there's not a metric or a formula, it is more sort of qualitative based on what's out there, what size, what's the surrounding, what's the context, how's it fit in with the other ecological resources around it? Does that answer your question?
So it's not related to, like, coastal act requirements?
It's not, the only policy would have been, is it 25 feet? That's the only thing we would look at from a policy standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. A question from Mr. McGowan. Just to be clear, the restoration that's being done by the applicant would be in the setback area, but then also down the slope banks as well?
Yeah, Chair Thompson, Commissioner Campanella, yes, that's correct. We would go from the edge of the 25-foot setback, over to the top of bank, down to the creek, across the water, and back up to the property line on the other side. We actually had a lot of discussion about that, but yeah, it would include the entire area, because really, you couldn't responsibly do it any other way, because what's existing is so bad now, you have to get all that out, and then do something good.
Okay. Just a question on the landscape that's there now, let's say. There's findings of what, either in the stream, or the turtles, or whatever, there's evidence of what's there now, given the plants and trees and whatever, the non-natives that are there. By cleaning up the area to a native condition, is there a concern that perhaps that balance changes, based upon what's being input and put into the area? I know the idea is to clean it up, but do you change the balance of what types of nature, animals are there, birds and?
Yeah, that's an insightful question, and the answer is it likely would change, although what it would do is tend to drift away from the more common invasive, some of the real common birds and things like that. You should have in a mature native community, a higher level of biodiversity, supporting more native critters and more things like that. So it likely would. We see the same types of birds, for example, in really weedy, bad areas. And when they're restored, you see a different mix of species come in there. So, in fact, doing the restoration, even though it's wholly positive, would require a permit from Cal Fish and Wildlife, because we would be on the bank doing that. It'd be a very easy permit to get, but it is precisely on that thing that, in the process of making it better, we don't want it to harm.
And then, there is modeling and various computer software available to show you, based upon the conditions that are being revised too, what likelihood there would be of certain wildlife that would use it, based upon how the restoration is going. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of a model, like a digital model or that sort of thing, but Mitch Siemens, who's our lead wildlife biologist here, has been working here for a couple decades. We know the resource as well. There's a pretty good, Creek Division has a ton of information. There's a lot of data on what you need to maximize the value of our drainages in Santa Barbara County and on the central coast in general. So, you know, can I always predict Mother Nature? No, but in general, yes, you can predict that by creating a deeper pool, some basking sites, we would expect more turtles, for example, to hang out there. Different types of substructure, the understory and the upper story, will get, you know, chorus frogs hanging along the banks. And so it is reasonably predictable.
Okay. So it may change a bit. Now, currently, there is a fence up there for trash, et cetera. Is the proposal to remove that fence, I saw a split rail in there, is that what's going to occur, proposed?
I think that is, in fact, what we, one of the things we were discussing before we came over here today, it was brought up, the issue of homelessness and that sort of thing, keep people out versus make it a more inviting, hey, learn about your creek systems in Santa Barbara, understand, you know, be, experience it. If it has that cyclone fence, just emotionally, you kind of, you're not going to connect with it at all, even if there's a sign hanging on there that says this is restored. So personally, I could go either way. I enjoy the opportunity to get people to know what's going on in their creeks. At the same time, if that makes it easy for the homeless to get in there, that would be unacceptable. But the current plan I saw has a split rail.
And then, we were talking about a wildlife corridor. Is it established wildlife corridor, meaning, and what does that mean?
So corridors in general are where you have, the creatures tend to follow the same path to get to A to B. In this area, I would say it is a wildlife corridor, because there really is no other opportunity, unless they're going to walk up the sidewalk, to get there. They have to stay in the creek. Because it's channelized, there's urban development, industrial development on both sides, it really is not going to be providing a massive value. I'm not expecting coyotes and mountain lions and bears wandering up and down there on a routine basis, which probably would have happened a couple hundred years ago, when we had a big wetland and all that. Certainly, the avian, the birds are working up and down that, excuse me, that whole corridor as they go through there. So it's not a really big functional corridor for large mammals or anything like that, but absolutely, the wildlife is moving through there.
You mentioned, we were speaking today about situations, a particular situation for consideration when something's being restored and what the setback should be based on the situation. There's nothing as simple as some type of matrix or decision tree in your line of work or that you do to say, well, if this is a situation, you know, it can be 25. If it's not, if this is a combination of other factors, it really should be greater, whether there's water present, or riparian, or what type of wildlife. Is it all just case-by-case, or is there some type of formatic or matrix that you folks work with?
In my experience, it is largely site-specific, based on what's going on. In this particular scenario, you're, you know, the type of thing that might get considered is if we don't have a project, it stays as it is. How does that compare? Well, that's not technically a bio issue, you know, in the sense of, we're not citing the buffer based on whether it's good for a frog, or a turtle, or what have you, but in order to do a good thing, you're getting this project approved, or what have you. So it is, it does factor into, you know, a much wider corridor there, has no connectivity to anything else, because you've got 101 on the north, you've got the street on the other side, and you've got development on the south. So they could, you know, pull off into that and then pull back in, if you follow me on the dispersion corridor.
Mention the studies of the northeast, northwest. Yeah, I did mention, what's referenced, there's some documentation that you all have about creek buffers, and a study that either Creek's Division did or supported, and, you know, a number of those studies are in there, are from Portland and Washington State, where you have a rather different setting. You have so much, you know, 110 inches of rain a year compared to our 13, so you have a much different setup there. So that would be another example of something that would be factored in.
You have to know where you are when you're looking at it. How does it relate biologically to the things around it, and to the things that are abiotic?
Okay, thank you. Question for the applicant. The only question I have really on the circulation and parking is, I can't tell what the spaces would accommodate, what size vehicles. I'm just, for consideration, as you planned it out, I would appear your lunchtime, it would appear maybe your lunchtime, time, crowd are going to be workers, or area workers, and you could tell there's a lot of people in industry that have trucks, so that way we're across the way. So I would presume you would want to have conflicts between your access point to your deliveries and oversized vehicles that may be in there. So I would just, I don't know if you've done it yet, but maybe take a look at that you have a sufficient variety of spaces for a variety of vehicles to park.
Well, we, first thing we did is we made all of them, we didn't use eight-and-a-half-foot spaces, we used nine-foot spaces. So they're, all of these spaces, with the exception of a few that are back in the back, are standard-sized spaces. I designed the Staples parking lot, so I'll never do that again, never live that down. The bottom line is, this really is the main client entrance to the site, and I think the reality with the way people would use this is, probably the majority of the folks are going to want to park in the area that is open and outside and under the trees. However, I think there's going to be a lot of people that are going to realize, I don't want to park in there where it's shady. And all of that is accessed, you know, right off of this point, which is away from the truck access. I think very few people are going to tend to use this as their way in, they might use it as their way out, as they're leaving the site. But we did think about that, and that's, you know, as I started my presentation, I mean, the first thing really I did have to think about was how the trucks were going to get in here and offload.
Okay, thank you. Two questions for staff. One is on the view analysis. I'm trying to clarify in my own mind the difference between the analysis that's done from Cabrillo, and what, let's say, the instructions and goals are for public views from Carrillo Boulevard and areas down by the beach, and the view analysis, and what's the goal of the corners from across the street to the building? Are these different requirements, and are different things looked for in doing the visual analysis?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Campanella, in this case, the primary view that we're concerned with is the mountain view, and whether or not the project blocks the mountain views. And so that's why the intersection is the critical viewpoint. As you move south from the site down Garden Street, existing buildings, and also due to the curve of the road, makes it difficult to see the site. It's not really visible until you get right close to it, so, which is why those were the viewpoints chosen. When you refer to the view analysis from the beach, are you referring to what's listed in the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan for the building height and determining?
No, local coastal plan.
Okay. So it's similar, the difference here is that there really aren't views towards the beach. You know, we'll be asking the applicant for some views from the highway, just to make sure that the project isn't blocking those views, but generally, there aren't views of the beach from the site, so we're really focusing on mountain views.
And when we say mountain views, do we mean, is the Riviera considered part of that view, or the higher elevation mountains behind it, for, when you're blocking something, or consider it visually?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Campanella, that's a good point. It is something that's considered, because we do tend to look at it as two aspects of the one view. There's the view of the Riviera, as well as the view of the San Ynez Mountains above that. And so this project does block the view of the Riviera as seen in those simulations. However, there are points where the top ridge of the mountains is still visible. So those are things we take into consideration in the analysis. We will be looking at both of those.
Okay. My last question for the moment is on the specific plan. There is, within the pre-application review, there's a comment from staff that, and I want to make sure I have this right, if the current site plan is submitted for approval, that the project, the entire project that was previously submitted would have to be officially withdrawn? Not just this part of it, but the entire project? Is that correct?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Campanella, yes, because the project was submitted as a whole, it would require the entire project to be withdrawn. As the applicant mentioned, they are advertising the other site for lease, and so we anticipate that that's something that would need to occur anyway.
Okay, the original, well, the current plan that was submitted included the housing component of 91 residential units, including middle-income, affordable under-inclusionary, and 222 Santa Barbara Street for 16 affordable. So if this goes forward, there is no commitment to produce those units? That plan can change to other allowed uses under the zoning?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Campanella, that is correct.
So, other allowed uses, be it hotel or other type visitors serving, the traffic study that would have to be done would have to, I don't think there was a final one done anyway, but it would have to incorporate the fact that, in the trip analysis, that a lot of the uses in the area are going to be for people outside of town, let's say, rather than residents. They'd figure that into the traffic modeling, correct?
We'll need to take a look at that as part of the traffic model.
Okay. So I guess that's a question, and maybe a comment later. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you. Can something from the applicant team sort of take me back to the late 80s and tell me about the creation of that specific plan? Just background, maybe you weren't paying attention to land use back then either, I don't know, maybe if Brian needs to give some?
Maybe I was not living in Santa Barbara at that time. Do you have a specific question about?
I guess I'll cut to the chase here, in the interest of time. I'm wondering why you've ended up with shopping a market here, when the specific plan allows for more uses than there's just that. So with the pyramid concept we have here, you could do just about anything, but is...
That's correct.
So just take me back, maybe if it starts in the 80s, it doesn't have to, but I really am just getting at why we're talking about a supermarket here. And I haven't heard yet, and maybe you're saving it for your submittal, but just sort of demand information, market-wise, about why a market's going to survive here, when we've had some troubles in other parts of town.
And Chair Thompson, Commissioner Higgins, there is, I could stand here probably for an hour and go through, you know, some of the history, starting in the 80s with the inception of the specific plan. I'm not going to do that, obviously. The specific plan was, there were a few different projects that were proposed, that one did include a hotel. At one point, the warehouse property where we first all met at the site visit, was going to be incorporated into the specific plan. There was a specific plan amendment being processed also, after the original 83 specific plan was certified. And that structure, that warehouse building, we call it the Calava Warehouse Building, was visioned as an open market, kind of like a Pike's Place-type market, and that's actually been an interest and a vision of the Wright family also. Over time, for a variety of economic reasons, other projects that were proposed that included the aquarium, and museums, and hotels, and restaurants, that the project was quite substantial at the time, and I believe that the political will and the community was an obstruction to complete that project. So having said all that, this particular site, the Wright family still wanted to do this market concept. The open-air market concept, we don't think is going to work at that corner, so it has transformed into more of a, you know, anchor tenant retail market. And in terms of the business plan and the demand, the family and their broker have been approached by many retailers, as Mr. Cornell mentioned, he's been in those meetings. There's interest, and I think that these retailers would not approach the owner if there isn't a viable market opportunity at this site.
I just want to add, real quickly, I think there is definitely, among the markets that are out there that have an interest in the Santa Barbara market, there is a deficit on the east side, as far as markets are concerned. I mean, the north end of town, the west side is served much better, but certainly, the lower west, lower east side, even in Montecito, you know, that's a market that is underserved in terms of existing markets. So there is a strong interest, and there has been for years, in getting something into this area. You know, where we did REI, I can tell you that Whole Foods was extremely interested in that location, as a market location. So that's being, you know, in this area, and certainly, the freeway relationship is something that, from their standpoint, is a very positive one, because it is, you know, it's easy on, easy off, as long as there isn't too much traffic. So, but, you know, there were questions about the EIR. I mean, there's absolutely no question that the traffic triggers an EIR for this project, regardless of any of the other issues, because, you know, it is a traffic generator. Finally, what I was going to say is that in terms of then pyramid zoning and the mixed use, we don't have an option to put any housing on this site because of the 250-foot limitation as a result of the latest general plan. So residential, you know, the Villa del Mar could not be built today because of that limitation, and nor could we put any residential on this site.
Questions, thank you. To staff, there's a, in our attachment one behind the PRT letter, the first policy, LCP policy 3.13, developers shall be required to provide onsite rec-
LCP policy 3.13, developers shall be required to provide onsite recreational open space and parking for New Year's users generated by any new development, et cetera, et cetera. So is that just speaking, just educate me about that policy? What does that mean? It's generally just parking for that development? Or is that speaking about offsite demand coming from other places in the funk zone where we need to maybe provide parking at this location? Is that a stretch?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Higgins, with regard to the parking, it is specifically for the new development on that site. It's not to address a deficiency in the, the overall area. It's to make sure that each new development is, you know, meeting its own parking demand.
Question for Creeks. So not, and maybe the applicant, just to clarify, there's no proposal and no current requirement by the city staff or Creeks Division to remove the channel wall?
Correct.
My last question was asked by Commissioner Schwartz. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pujo, you have more questions?
Yes, I did. So these now are my questions for the applicant team. First, for a representative of Arcadis, and I don't know if that's Mr. McGowan or Ms. Carroll, maybe you can decide when you hear the question. So I, I want to go a step further with wetland determination or not, a step further than Commissioner Jordan had done previously, and phrase it maybe the way I had needed a little bit more information on. And first of all, I read in your report that there is, there are certain sections of the Laguna Channel that are subject to state jurisdiction and subject to federal jurisdiction. But I wasn't clear if that meant exactly this location or not.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Pujo, yes. There is state and federal jurisdiction on all of our surface drainages in California and across the United States. In this particular case, without delving too deeply into it, the federal jurisdiction would be by the mean high tide line or the ordinary high watermark, depending if it's tidal up at this, at that point. So that's basically the bathtub ring, which at this site is going to be right at the water's edge. That's the limit of federal jurisdiction per section 404 of the Clean Water Act. The state jurisdiction is top of bank to top of bank, or the outer edge of the riparian corridor to the outer edge of the riparian corridor, whichever is wider. So in this case, you've got, it's not a very good riparian corridor, but you have one. It's about where the fence is. So state jurisdiction would be from the fence down and over to the other top of the bank where there is no riparian corridor.
Okay. And so part two of that question has to do with Coastal Commission definition of wetland and also the Army Corps because of its federal jurisdiction, I believe, that we're also looking at Army Corps definition of a wetland. And I know there's three, there's a three parameter test along with that, but rather than try to be the biologist, which I'm not, in the case of this portion of Laguna Channel, I know there's one obligate species I saw that was, the bull rushes is, is present. But does it meet the Coastal Commission definition of wetland and/or does it meet the Army Corps definition of wetland?
Right. So the easiest, well, they're both fairly easy. So in this case, the court, when I'm talking about the federal jurisdiction, section 404 of the Clean Water Act regulates wetlands and other waters of the U.S. The other waters of the U.S. are linear features. So this would be an other water of the U.S. at that ordinary high watermark or mean high tide line down would be federally jurisdictional.
So, I'm sorry. So are you saying it does not meet the Army Corps definition of wetland?
It, it does meet section, the Army Corps 404 definition of a other water of the U.S., which is treated essentially the same as a wetland.
But is it the three parameter? I'm trying to get at that three parameter test.
Right. So the three parameter is for a wetland where you generally have a, a nonlinear feature. And so you go out and look to see, does it have hydro soils?
Right.
So is hydrology?
Right.
Facultative or wetter plants? And you, you go and you do your little pits out there till you find out and can draw a circle around that as it gets drier and drier and moves out. In this case, you have a linear feature. So instead of the three parameters, you use the ordinary high watermark.
It doesn't apply. The three parameter test doesn't apply, is that what you're saying?
Right. You'd use the ordinary watermark to delineate the federal jurisdiction.
And is that the same with the coastal?
So coastal, the Coastal Act definition of a wetland is essentially anything that ever gets wet. It's, it's unbelievably inclusive.
So it's likely that the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Act policies would call it a wetland, a definitional wetland?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's basically all the questions I had. I just wanted to get that, that clear in terms of Arcadis. But I do have, I do have some questions for Mr. Carnell and the applicant team. Thanks. So my first question was partially addressed by Commissioner Higgins. And I'm just, would like a little bit more information on why this version of the concept plan removed or lessened the amount of available retail space other than the grocery store? It seemed like the, the prior plan had a more mix of commercial uses where this is, and I think that Ms. Allen described it a few minutes ago, or maybe you did, maybe it was you, that is more focused on like a anchor tenant. And I, I'm curious about that, but also it actually concerns me to some extent as well because how it affects the, well, basically because of policy consistency, I think it raises a couple of new issues in my mind about that. But what, what generated that particular shift in this version?
Well, I, it really has been the conversations with, with the markets, with the tenants that would be interested in this site. I think the reality is there's really nobody, no markets out there that are interested in 20,000 square foot spaces anymore. They want, you know, their, their model is for a larger market. I mean, typically, the markets these days are looking at 40,000 or 50,000 square feet. So that is the trend in the marketplace. I can tell you that the rights actually preferred the idea that there would be more retail tenancy and that the market would be smaller. And we've kind of been struggling against what is the market trend, no pun intended, that is forcing, you know, the larger stores. So in the conversations, in the very hard conversations that we've had with prospective tenants and prospective markets that would, that would work in this location, they have all been pushing for a larger footprint, which has reduced that retail component. You know, we ultimately have the limit of the 45,000, whatever it is that's in the specific plan. So that's been, you know, that's been the ceiling for everything. But that's the simple answer for why.
Does your design have the ability to flex, let's say, in the case that that doesn't pan out? Are you then in a position of seeking a large retailer? Or can it be, is the plan designed as such that it could be divided up into smaller spaces if that large area is a no-go?
Well, I mean, certainly, an important tenet of sustainability is that you have buildings that are flexible. And I think the fact that you've got a large footprint of 36,000 square feet on one level here, you know, that that could be broken up into, into additional tenants. So I would, I would hope very much that the building ultimately is, is flexible over 100-year or more lifespan.
Yeah, I would hope so too. Thanks. My second question, and, and these kind of drive some of, like I mentioned, these questions kind of drive some of my concerns. So the second question is, I was actually a bit surprised when I saw the plan that the parking is all loaded towards the front along Yananoli Street. And it is an L shape. And so I guess my question to you is, why this configuration and not one that would allow more street presence by the building?
Well, I, I really think it does, it absolutely comes down to parking. And I will tell you, we've, we've studied over two years. I have studied a plethora of parking options. We looked at parking underground, and, and the owners seriously considered that. The problem with parking underground is that we're in a very high water table situation here where at about seven feet you hit water.
Right.
So to build parking underground, you're building a boat and it's, and you're, you know, it's, it is very difficult and very challenging. And the market tenants don't like underground parking because that's something they believe their customer base is not really comfortable using. So we had sort of, you know, financial, water table, and tenant pushback on that issue. We looked at even the idea of putting the parking up on the roof so that the market was more down at the ground. And that has associated problems as well because we've got to go way up. You know, markets require very high ceilings. You've got to basically have 20-foot clear ceilings in, in markets. And so we had to get way, way up in the air with the parking, and, and a significant amount of the site was occupied then by ramps and, and lost to parking. So I, I completely understand the concern. I mean, we're, we're sort of, we, we've, although we've got the parking here at the corner, it's, it's basically hidden within the building. And, and, you know, I, it's, it's certainly been a, a concern of ours all along is that we create a nice presence at the street and still deal with this parking problem. And so I, I think this solution by, by capturing that parking within the building mass, and you have that Monterey style at the, at the corner, you have what it is, what it very typically has is, you know, smaller windows, not a lot of fenestrations. We really hide that parking. And obviously, it results in then the, you know, the vertical circulation necessary to get up to the podium level. But that's something that we've, you know, gotten very positive feedback on. A lot of these tenants don't have an issue with that kind of scenario, and many of them are building them in more urban environments.
I understand that in terms of the covered parking area, but I'm still perplexed about the retail leg of the, of the site plan and the fact that it's pushed so far back with a lot of parking in the front, which means someone using one of the smaller spaces, I don't know if it's four spaces, six spaces, I don't know how many you divide it into. But nonetheless, there's smaller shops, which would require somebody to go entirely through the parking lot, park, and then walk in rather than someone having, you know, pedestrian access or, or some sort of visual presence of those retail shops themselves more from the, from the street. And, and that continues to be a site planning concern.
Well, I completely understand that. And I think, you know, it, we can't deny the fact that this, that Yananoli changes dramatically at Garden Street. It is not a walking neighborhood at that point. I mean, that what you have to walk to is, you know, the, the, you know, the D-SAL plant or the, you know, the sewage treatment plant, and, you know, you've got the rescue mission down there a little bit further. But this is just not a high pedestrian, nor will it ever be a high pedestrian neighborhood. You will have people coming to this site, certainly from the west. I think that happens. But it's not, it's not like you would have if you were just a, a block to the west on Yananoli. It's a very, very different environment. The parking certainly is, you know, a critical element, as I said in my presentation. People are going to, for the most part, drive here to do their grocery shopping. It's not a pedestrian environment.
That actually brings me to my third question, my third and last question for you.
I set you up for that, huh?
You set me up. You, well, maybe I set you up. I don't know.
Maybe.
My third question has to do with that. The non-motorized circulation for the area. And I, I need to be convinced of this, and I'll need to be convinced of this when it comes back. Yes, it's true. Right now, it's a harsh environment, although I must say, across the street, immediately across the street on East Yananoli, there is, you know, pedestrian-scale activities going on there directly across the street that, you know, appreciate as part of what we do, right? Catty corner, there's the residential condos, of course. And East Yananoli is harsh now. West Yananoli, directly across the other side of Garden, also used to be harsh. And it's significantly softened to more friendly now after the, the condos were, were built and the work along that streetscape was done, kind of calming things down and making it a little bit more inviting. So, so I see, I see the bike parking as being, I see the, I see the non-motorized access and streetscape part to be very utilitarian, and I think, at least from my perspective, needing, needing some work. So that's, and I believe there's a lot of policy that I have flagged in the documents as well, I won't go through them all with you today, and lead us to that as well. So that's something that will, I will be looking for in any design plan. And I guess to merge into a comment there, that is my main comment about the, the site design. And Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I mean, are we going to, I guess we need to go through your questions first, but at some point, I'm, I don't know if you want me to go into my comments or wait for a second.
No, I'd like to wrap up the questions so we can get on to the public testimony.
All right, that'll be my, yeah, those are my questions now. Thanks.
Thank you.
See, I didn't get a question out. I missed that. But it is important, as I said, that Yananoli, the condos, the Yananoli condos could not be built today, nor can any residential be built along that Yananoli corridor anymore.
I understand. I understand.
Okay, I have two questions. For staff, your letter to the applicant, your pre-application review comments starts right out with saying, "Staff doesn't support the project." And then you go right into discussions about esches and federally endangered species and so forth. And my question is, do you, does staff have some information that is different than what the biologist's report has that would lead you to want to bring esches and federally endangered species to our attention here? And I will ask the same question to the biologist after you get finished answering.
Chair Thompson, staff does not have any different information than what was submitted. It's just looking at it in a more holistic way versus just the site-specific. With the restoration, this, you know, arguably is better than what's there now. But we also have policies about increasing our minimum setbacks. And so that's where staff was coming from in our recommendation.
Discussion about tidewater gobies, to me seems like a red herring, even though that's not an endangered species. When we have a tide gate that prevents tidewater gobies from getting from the tide pools up to this reach of the channel. So that's the reason why I asked. I'd like Mr. McGowan maybe to talk about it. Your report says you found no evidence of any of these species in the channel. And your report to us today said you would not envision that. Is that true?
Chair Thompson, I would say the direct observations, absolutely, we didn't see any gobies, we didn't see any pond turtles, there wasn't any direct observation. That it would be too far to say, therefore, just because I didn't see them when I was out there on Tuesday, they can't exist there. We have lots of reports of those species in the watershed. Water quality would affect those resources regardless of whether they ever come to this particular section of the creek. But if, if our project leads to a discharge, it goes down somewhere lower, and that affects a species. So there are certainly connections. I think staff is appropriate to say, hey, there are ecological issues out there, we better be careful. My interpretation is that, looking at it from a existing policy at 25 feet, is restoration good? Will it be better now than in the future? All of those are yes. Will it then, with the 25 feet, actually be one of the larger riparian corridors on the existing stretch? Yes, that, that is the case too. You know, the dialogue here is, should we do more? Should we, should we make it five times bigger than anything else? That's, I think, it has come up, at least my, my view of it.
Okay, thanks. I have a brief question for Mr. Carnell. You mentioned part of it before, that markets like 20-foot heights. I was going to ask you, what drove your 40-plus-foot height building with a two-story building? I assume the podium height, there's some guidelines for how high the podium height has to be for parking.
We need, we need 11.
So what, what goes into the plate heights to drive you up over 40 feet?
It's, well, it's, it's really not a whole lot over 40 feet. It's basically, we need 11 feet floor to floor for the, for the, for the parking structure and all the plumbing and the... plumbing and the mechanical that's going to come down into that space. That's a minimum. And then we need the 20 feet clear in the market. Then I still need structure. And then I still need screening of mechanical equipment up on the roof. So it's really the the thing that ultimately gets me to 40 feet is the mansard, which is screening the mechanical up on the roof.
And 20 feet ceiling height in a market is a pretty hard and fast thing from the market standpoint?
Well, I think, I mean, they they would probably go to 18 feet as far as clear to to the underside of the structure. So that's that's their criteria. But we have, I will, I will assure you, because there, you know, obviously, the concern is the view from the coast to the mountains. We've tried to keep that down as much as possible, but that's where it it ended up. And and we've kept it low. I've really worked very hard to keep it lowest at the Yan and Ollie side with that Monterey style. And in fact, we have very little parapet there. And then we've brought the the upper roof around at the back of the property on the on the freeway side is then higher to screen the equipment. And and these markets do have large mechanical pieces of equipment on the roof.
Okay. Yeah, well, obviously, my question was because the views of the building are an issue here and and the height of the building and the fact that the taller it gets per floor, the less human scale it is, too. So we're looking at scale as well as the overall height and massing.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Seeing no other questions from the commission, I'll open public testimony. We have requests to speak from Hillary Hauser.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, members of the commission, Hillary Hauser from Heal the Ocean. I apologize for loading you all up with paper at the last minute and sending you emails at the last minute. This went right over my radar, this issue. We've actually been working on this particular site for 15 years. And I love this project. I love Brian Cornell's work. I wanted to see it go. It, I agree with Commissioner Schwartz. He said this is an opportunity to clean up a degraded site. And we've been working for years on groundwater contamination underneath the city of Santa Barbara to identify and prioritize for cleanup and then to get the money to do it. We worked with County Hazmat when it was with the fire. We worked with Environmental Health when it went over there. And then, I mean, we have files on this property and other properties. And we got it all up to the regional board and then hired a staff to help get it into the computerized database for the purpose of prioritizing the worst sites and then getting the money, whether it's regional water quality for cleanup and abatement fund. But now we have Prop One that we've been very successful in accessing for wastewater plant and also groundwater assist, there are now groundwater money. So I'm here not to put a spoke in the or the wheel or the stick in the spoke, but to say that this is an opportunity to work on this site, which is actually one of the worst contaminated sites in the city. I have to, on the business of the history, there's a gap in there where Mr. Cornell stopped. It was used by Caltrans. It was a railroad yard. The Southern Pacific then leased to the city to use as a dump. There was the city dump before it moved to Ealing's Park and then eventually onto Tahigus. That's what the this little newspaper article talks about, how the city, you know, we have to get out of the Southern Pacific property. We've got to go over to Ealing's Park. So we've got the history this big. When the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan was adopted in 1983, in your package, there is a memo dated November 97 to Kate Sulka, who was with the Environmental Health Hazardous Material Specialist. And this is a memo to her about EIR proposals from Dames and Moore, which speaks of groundwater contaminations, hazardous substances. So there's a lot of this. We got into this beginning in 2000 because somebody came into our office with these, this picture is in your package, but there was a leaching from from the wall at the freeway garden corner. And we had it tested. It's very super, super high. And that's when we found out that the source was a city dump. And the chipper, the wood agrochip operated on top of that dump until recently. So having said all this, I'm going to just say that our motto is to help. We have wanted for years to see a project happen that would trigger a cleanup. We think it can be done without ruining everything before actual construction starts. So that stuff has to go. It has to get out of there. It's going to leach and leach into, it's leaching into Laguna Channel now. But this, if ever the city wants to see something beautiful on this site, I would say this is it. But we have to start from the ground up. And we're here to help and discuss financing opportunities to clean it up. But it has to be cleaned up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public that wants to speak on this? Close the public testimony and bring it back to the commission for comments. Nobody has any comments, huh? Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay, I'll go first. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would say that, Allison, would you put up your slide of your issues? The staff's main focus is to try to get feedback on the three issues. One is the channel setback. The other is circulation and site planning. And the third is the massing and view impacts. So rather than going into great detail about details that haven't even been reviewed by the staff yet, let's just try to focus on those three issues. Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay, thanks. For starters, I also want to say that in addition to this slide, on the very first page of our staff report, staff has asked for feedback on the following five areas, not just these three areas, but some of them incorporated into these three: site plan, land use, design, general plan, and local coastal plan consistency. So I think it's important for us to frame our comments that encompass all of that since that's what's been asked of us. First, in terms of the site plan. So let me get this. Maybe we could have the site plan up if we could. And here I want to pick up on where Ms. Hauser left off. I think what whatever design is ultimately brought forward with staff and and ABR before coming back to Planning Commission, what's under the site is as important as what's on the site. And what we don't directly have identified by staff is one of the three issues I think is critical. And that is how this property and the adjacent city-owned property has been used for many years, which is why I believe when I get to issues like creek setback, traffic circulation, visual resources, I think what first and foremost needs to be addressed jointly between the city and this property owner is how the land has been used and it the and the nexus between that and the channel, how it will continue to be used between those two property owners. I don't feel that I can segregate or somehow surgically separate this property and its impact on the channel and whatever restoration might be ultimately proposed and considered. And the relationship with the adjacent city property, again, with that pipe, there's outflow. I don't know what else has gone on on the city property that may have an impact. But I think that's critical. So I'm going to ask staff, and I would expect that the city to, in a in a in-depth fashion, analyze that. And I have great respect for Heal the Ocean, so I'd like to see the city and the applicant take advantage of the year's worth of research that Heal the Ocean has done. And if they can provide assistance in any way, including financing of any sort of study, cleanup, assistance with restoring the habitat, or actually, I don't even know if we should call it restoring because of what it's been. I think it's simply improving the habitat in the area. So let me start with that. The specific details of the site, I want to touch on a few items that we have here. I'm going to pull out our site plan. At this point, given what how Mr. Cornell described the the contents really of of the project, I mean, kind of inside the envelope, and the need for the height or the decisions made that reflect the height, I today do not have a concern about the height. I asked early on in your presentation, Mr. Cornell, to see if you had a view shed of your proposed project against, it's not just the Riviera, but looking up at the Riviera because of this building that right now is actually very prominent in the view shed. It's at the dead end of Montecito Street. This is the one I referenced. You thought maybe it was Jerry Beaver's. I don't know who owns this property. It is Spanish style. It's two-story. And there's a little turret or whatever I should call it up on top, a pop-up. But it clearly is in the view shed currently of looking at the Riviera. So when I ask myself, we have a vacant, more or less a vacant property or highly underutilized and undeveloped property. And we're asking ourselves what view shed impacts are appropriate or acceptable. I I would suggest to both my colleagues and staff that we look carefully at what else is in that view shed now off to the distance that's already impacting otherwise unimpeded views, in this case of the mountains. Okay. I also want to talk about parking in terms of site design. Mr. Cornell, I think I heard you say that you're proposing a slightly wider parking space for each of the parking spaces. Did I hear you mention nine feet? Or is that correct?
Yes, I said nine feet. But that is, that is, the city has a nine-foot standard, but they also have an eight-and-a-half-foot standard. And when it's eight-and-a-half feet, they usually they they require a deeper parking bay, so
I see.
so you can have more room to get out of the space and turn around. But we've we've designed it to nine-foot spaces.
So I would encourage staff and the applicant to come to a common common agreement or understanding about what would be the acceptable, both the the intersection of the number of spaces required and as wide as possible spaces. I believe, we don't just have anecdotal, I mean, we have quantitative information all around town where we have very narrow parking spaces. And it's just the state of our society today. We have large, many large vehicles that people are buying and driving. They do not fit safely into these parking spaces, sandwiched in one right next to the other. And in fact, a number of insurance companies have told me that most of their claims in the city of Santa Barbara are from grocery parking lots with too narrow parking spaces. So I think we can understand the situation, given that. So let's see what we can do there. I thought it was an interesting comment, Mr. Cornell, that the likely grocery tenant believes that the customer demographic or the likely customer demographic doesn't like underground parking. And I don't know if that informed Mr. Wright's decision as to why not, why to not go with underground. But I say I think that's interesting. And I don't know if that's a Santa Barbara phenomenon because the Whole Foods in San Francisco, and when I lived there for 20 years and shopped at Whole Foods, it's all underground. So they have an upscale market. They have a presence here in Santa Barbara. Here it's surface, but they do a booming business in San Francisco all underground. So I don't know what, how you got the information. You do, maybe you can, I don't know if you want to go back and revisit underground or not, but and and you have a water table issue, so I'm not, I don't even think you can go there. But I just thought the comment was interesting because I don't think it applies pervasively. Now regarding shopping carts, I started to reference this. I would strongly encourage you, and I don't know if this is a tenant decision, but I'm hoping you have some leverage over this tenant decision, the grocery tenant, to buy only the newest, state-of-the-art shopping carts that have built into them the technology that physically restrains the carts from leaving the perimeter of the property. It really helps in those locations to avoid carts being taken off and, you know, taken home, littered, ending up, in this case, in our coastal zone, even it could be as far down as Cabrillo. And I think that would really be an eyesore. And I know it's something none of us want, but it takes some planning. And I would encourage you to talk to your potential tenants about that. Shared parking, I have a comment to make about that because on page nine, the pre-app review team comments, staff talks about shared parking. And I agree with staff's position, so I wanted to mention this. Staff says, because the parking will be shared among businesses within the project site, no reservation or assignment of parking spaces will be allowed. And here's an example. I don't mean to go back over Trader Joe's, but the Trader Joe's Surgery Center on Upper De Lavina is an example where many times of the day, there are plenty of open spaces in the surgery center designated parking spaces, and there's overflow or an excess of need with it being underparked in the Trader Joe designated spaces. So it makes most sense to me that you leave it open so this fluidity and flexibility is achieved there. That sounds good to me. I also think, Mr. Cornell, that parking signage is going to be very important on the property. As I'm looking closely at ingress egress, you mentioned that you are likely to find or we're likely to find most of the market, the grocery customers wanting to park in this area closest to the street, to the entrance and exit, as opposed to going, I think you'd say going around back. I don't have my my pointer with me today. So I think parking, if, you know, you say additional parking or however you designate or point customers to additional overflow parking areas, I think that's going to be important for, both for for customer satisfaction purposes, but even more important from our perspective, land use planning, is a smooth traffic flow. I have often seen at the Ralphs on Correo and Chapala, where customers who aren't regular customers don't know that there's this vast underground parking area. And they wait and they're trying to crowd in and they're backed up on Chapala because they don't know if they just either go around the block or wait and then, you know, traverse through the the above ground. There is a way to very easily and comfortably move to the underground portion with plenty of parking spaces day and night. So that leads me to actually what's underground at the Ralphs parking, the Ralphs Grocery Store at Correo and Chapala. And that has to do with a bike cage that is not used for bicycles at this point. We talked about this on another project at the Planning Commission. It seems to now become a storage locker. And so when we talk about either bicycle rooms or bicycle cages, I would ask you to work closely with staff on trying to figure out a way to have it truly be utilized and be promoted for such. And so especially if it's enclosed, if it's not an open bicycle cage, for example, the bicycle cage at the county administration building up on Annapamoo, that's sort of nestled in the back of their engineering engineering building, that's completely open. You could see if anything other than bicycles were being parked there and that's locked up and only employees have access to that, you know, day and night, mostly day when they're using it. So that's the bicycle cage issue. Let me see what else about site plan. I'm going to get to creeks in a minute. I don't know if I should talk about traffic circulation at this point. I know you're going to do extensive studies. And so I won't say too much other than, it seems to me that with the the beautiful and very savvy improvements we made some years ago, with the area of Garden Street from Yan and Ollie down to Cabrillo, we've done a terrific job in opening it up, in beautifying it, and traffic flows very smoothly there. And there's less traffic there as far as the numbers I've seen than from Yan and Ollie and then, I don't know if we want to say north or up upwards towards the 101 interchange and beyond as you get up to Gutierrez and Coda and so forth. So I think the real challenge for for us collectively with this project is how we're going to handle the traffic circulation and traffic impacts as it relates to the 101 interchange. I don't know if that requires discussions with Caltrans. I would think so because the signaling of all those lights, and I see Mr. Dayton's no longer with us, but as he he regularly reminds the Planning Commission, they're controlled by Caltrans, not by the city of Santa Barbara, and I see that there's a potential for significant backup, Yan and Ollie, Garden Street, you know, all points in the area. And so we're going to have to try to figure that out. I don't want to overly restrict the development on this property as would be appropriate, but I think that traffic circulation and backup to 101 is going to be an issue. I personally anticipate, and from the documentation I've seen, that many of the customers coming to the grocery store are going to come off of 101 in either directions. So I think figuring that out is going to be critical. Also on the site, we have the issue of the deck. Let me go to that. On the one hand, I'm a strong proponent of high utilization of our limited real estate, our limited land in the city of Santa Barbara. So when it makes sense and where it's reasonably managed, appropriately managed, I like to see multiple uses of property or areas within a property where they're otherwise being underutilized. It could be at night, you know, there's no, there's no activity after a certain hour, let's say in the market, downstairs on your first floor, commercial, so that we don't, we avoid an area of the property that otherwise is a real gem, a real treasure for our community, in this case, very attractive rooftop views and setting, that that go to some good use. You know, maybe you want to offer it to nonprofits at a discounted rate, I don't know. Plenty of other property owners are doing that around town, and I think it certainly is a good community service and a good use of the property. Now, if that triggers, then additional complications regarding CUP, you'll just have to cross that bridge, I guess, when you decide. But I'm hoping that we can find a way, we, the city, those, the decision-makers in the city, can help you find a way to maximize the use of that rooftop that benefits as many users as possible. I'll leave it at that, and I know you've got a creative team working with you, so I'm sure you'll, you'll work on that. Let me see if there's anything else on site before I go to, I'm going to go back to the staff's. Creek setback, I've talked about, circulation site planning, visual resources. So when I look at the environmental issues, the physical environment, and it's not just creek setback, it's what really I think should be addressed in a much larger conversation and a series of considerations between the applicant and staff, and maybe even others in the community who are experts in some of these areas. But I think it would be not only a missed opportunity, but actually a responsible, I'll go as far as to say that. If we're just look at this property alone, as though it's somehow self-contained in its relationship to Laguna Channel, and that history about how it's been used by all of the users, not just this property owner and the tenants on this property, but again, I mentioned the city, and I can't emphasize enough how I think, and I'm sure Mr. Vincent won't like me saying this, but I'm going to say it anyway, I think the city has a responsibility to do its own studies of how it's using that property, the soil quality, the outflow to the channel, and do it before there's some sort of finalized habitat restoration plan agreed to with the applicant. In other words, I think it should happen in concert with the process the applicant's going through, because I'm hoping that there could possibly be some joint agreements for restoration, for improvement in our natural environment in this channel that, to me, looks like it's shared, even though I understand technically that the property owner before us today owns the property down into the channel and up over the other side, I think is it 25 feet? I guess I keep asking you that, Mr. Kornall, but basically up over the top of bank. So I can't emphasize that enough because I think we will just be sort of band-aiding the environmental degradation issue if we only look to this property owner at 301 to try to analyze, effectively address, and only partially solve, or only partially effectively address, a longstanding degraded environmental area in our community. Okay. The actual setback itself, here's what I'm struggling with, and that's the actual number. You know, today, I don't know what the right number is. We have this guidance language in our policies, and the reason I was asking earlier about how to triangulate the different numbers and seeking response from feedback from staff, I don't know how far beyond 25 feet is reasonable, is necessary. Part of that, I think, should come out of this, the joint studies between the property owner and the city on the actual quality of the land, the soil, and the water. So to me, it's almost putting the cart before the horse to talk about a number of, you know, number of feet of a creek setback, when I don't even know what the full environmental set of issues are today. I don't, and I'm not hearing that anybody else does, because we haven't gotten to a point where either through a mitigated negative declaration or a fully EIR, I don't think that's been uncovered, the full set. So I'm at a bit of a loss today to say, is 25 feet the right number, somewhere between 25 and 30, I don't know. To me, it's premature. Okay? And so I think in closing, oh, Mr. Kornall, I also wanted to address design because that is also requested of us, not on this slide from staff, but elsewhere in our documentation. Let me go back to the beginning of the staff report, because we're asked to comment on design as well. Here we go. Number three, page one of the staff report, design. While I, I know that this Mission, sort of hacienda-style, you know, Spanish architecture is not common in the funk zone area, we shouldn't even call this funk zone, south of 101. I think we need a new name for this neighborhood. And the Yan and Ollie condos have, you know, a different flavor of the Spanish colonial architectural style. Two things. Number one, I appreciate that on the backside of your project, and I'm looking at your sheet A-901, on the backside, it looks like, you know, you've streamlined it, you've softened it. It looks more like the traditional Spanish colonial architectural style we would see around town. Now to the Mission, the Mission hacienda-style, at first, I was a little taken aback by the contrast between this style and our otherwise very typical or standard Spanish colonial revival architecture style around town, especially in El Pueblo Viejo. However, here's where I am today after thinking it through. I think a contrast could be a good thing. I don't know that we want this new development on this side, you know, Yan and Ollie and Garden, to look like the residential condos across the street. And I think that there could be an aesthetic improvement in the area by not having identical or nearly identical architectural styles in this fast-developing, changing area of our community. So at this time, I'm fine with it. I'm going to support this architectural design, we'll see what ABR comes up with, but that's my thinking as to why I think this can move forward, sort of on the path that you're proceeding. So I think for now, those are my comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pujo.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, I just want to say thank you for the team, for even coming to us today for the concept review. I think it's a good idea for the applicants and for the city to get up to speed with the project and hear some initial comments that maybe can affect the design in the project from going through like a lot of, a lot more iterations that it may have to later on in the process. So I think this is, this is really good, and I appreciate all the information that was presented today, and the biology report especially, very thorough and helpful. I'll start, actually, I think, with a, with a couple of things that I think are easy for me to get out of the way. The decks come up a number of times. I think deck's a great idea, the rooftop deck. It's of all the things presented, I think to me, it's the easiest slam dunk, yeah, do it, kind of part of the plan. I also think it's consistent with policy. And I imagine there'll be some additional parking requirements or study that may be needed, but that's about it. In terms of the style per se, the Monterey style, not necessarily the site layout, as you heard earlier, I have some concerns about that, but the style generally speaking, clearly I have high respect for your design team, and I know that this needs to go start to finish through Historic Landmarks Commission, and I know that they will take a close look at it, and I look forward to hearing how it progresses as it goes through landmarks, as I think they're a lot more expert in this than I could be in the actual consistency of design features and that sort of thing. But in general, I don't have a problem with the, with the style in and of itself. I also, per se, just by numbers, by sheer height numbers, I don't have a problem with the height number. It's all going to be in my book when it comes back, it's all going to relate to what it does to the views, which we haven't really completely vetted out. And I also don't have a problem with the pedestal plan, as long as the design makes sense, and I'm sure we'll know about that once it goes through the Design Review Board. Another item that I just kind of leave to a technical approach for the moment until we learn more, is the, basically the internal circulation, the loading docks and the parking layout and whatnot. I know that's going to go through our traffic department, and I don't really, from my perspective, see that being the key to what, if I were coming for a concept review and being the first time we're seeing it as a commission, that I would like to address, and that's the bigger picture items. And so I'll leave that to when it, when it comes back. I do think, as mentioned earlier, that however the design, the site plan evolves, that we should keep in mind and track the flexibility of this space as designed. I know that the market interest in markets is now saying this square footage, or those that have approached, the applicant, are looking for this sort of template for a space. And this one's a grocery store, maybe that'll morph into something that's not a grocery store as well. But regardless of that, of who the future tenant is, we need to leave open that markets change, and public interest in types of commercial retail experiences, let's say, also change. And I think the space is going to be around for a long time once it gets built, and I think the site plan needs to be flexible for those changing needs. So regardless of what happens, I think that flexibility needs to be built in throughout. I want to go now to something that is, is, I feel like the real key point of what I would like to comment on in two areas, and one is policy and the other is the environmental Those really get to the heart of the bullet items that you've asked us to look at today as well. I'm going to start with policy. And there, we have a list, an excerpt of applicable policies in our, in our staff report, and I know each one of us could go through the general plan and the coastal plan and all the other different elements, the bike plan and the pedestrian plan, and come up with a huge expanded list that may also be relevant. But just looking at the ones that we have before us today for starters, I have some difficulty in what I know today about the site, in this plan's consistency with policies related to street presence and the vitality of the commercial areas in the city. And you see that woven throughout in a lot of our policy statements. I'll give you one example, and it was, it's on the first page of the applicable general plan policies under land use settlement this staff provided us, and that's LG4. And this is just one example. You'll find it peppered throughout our entire general plan. But this one, LG4, says Principles for Development. And to excerpt from that, it includes phrases like strengthen mobility options, promote healthy, active living. Later on, it goes on to the next page, but one of the bullet items is mobility and active living. Promote active living by encouraging compact, vibrant, walkable spaces. I want to see more of that in this project, and I believe there is plenty of opportunity to improve upon that. This is a start. It's not devoid of those aspects, but I see, I see substantial room for improvement in that area, and I hope as the design develops, that that will also develop too. So I think the street presence needs some work. The circulation versus the numbers counts and traffic counts and the space counts, I think the actual circulation for all modes of transportation needs to be looked at. How are people going to get from point A to point B if they're not in a car? You're drawing from a large area, the freeway will be important aspect. But other than the fact that this is available and a large parcel with the right zoning, with access to the freeway, aside from that, it's also part of the city, it's part of the coastal zone, it's part of an area that we're trying to improve and enhance in the regards of pedestrian activity, community activity and interest. There's been, you know, residential, we hope there will be additional residential in the area, maybe coming forward in the rest of the specific plan. And I want to see us move forward in that regard for every project, and this project in particular, because it's a large site and there is opportunity. So I think it needs work in that area. I want to move now to environmental review. We're not even started on an environmental document, we don't have the scoping done. So I realize the applicant's in a position, like, how do I make this project fit well when we go into environmental review? So all the work isn't done based on what comes out of the environmental review, and I totally get that. But there are some features, and I think Commissioner Schwartz mentioned in her comments too, that I can only opine on what I see in the pages, and most of it is policy, which is a little easier for me to grasp today, than the impacts that aren't really defined yet. So regardless of what these initial comments are, it is going to be very important to see what kind of impacts and mitigation requirements actually come out of that environmental document, and I think that they are going to be substantial and important, and probably will cause some, some changes in the design at that end. I think it's a little unavoidable. But, but let me go through a couple of them, and I'll start with biology because that gets us to the creek setback. The biology impacts, and one of the results of which will be some determination of what that creek setback should be, whether it be 25 or up to 100, it's a huge range, I agree. But it's not only dictated by a policy statement and by a riparian corridor, and is this substantial enough for this drainage to maintain its health in this part of the Laguna Channel? That's important, but there are other aspects of this that I believe may dovetail in with that question, that I think will also be important in understanding the full picture about what the setback should be. And that has to do with, I know little about any flooding aspects. You have high groundwater. You have high groundwater, you know that one already, but also the challenge of sea level rise. I have no idea what the result of that sea level rise study will be. I do know that if there is a need to plan for some adaptive changes for this area, that in and of itself could affect the amount of the buffer that we need for the creek. There is information, at least that I've read somewhat recently, and this may be old news to some, new news to other, but there are some studies out, particularly, I think, in the northern part of California, where some of the mud flat areas that were never hard protected, hard bank protected, were actually better suited for protecting against sea level rise than some of the, you know, in a more fixed development that has occurred. And what that brings to mind, and what it goes on to say, is that infiltration is a good, long-term adaptive strategy for protecting against sea level rise. Well, to me, that kind of makes a difference about if you're having a setback which has very limited development, maybe it needs to be extended with a buffer area of impervious surfaces that may have some limited ability for uses, but it may not be a, you know, do not enter zone to protect the habitat, but may need to be a buffer that it not only protects for the creek but also for that future need. And I would want to see that information before I make a final, get a final viewpoint myself on that. But for now, I would say 25 looks pretty minimal, pretty short end of the stick, actually, I'd say, for this size lot and the flexibility you have with design. And I have no idea whether that number needs to be 50 or over 50, but I think there's some opportunity to do something more than 25 feet. If our goal is to increase setbacks, and we have many constrained lots that we haven't been able to increase setbacks because they're already built out and constrained and small lots, we don't have that constraint here, and so I do think that 25 feet feels a little shy to me. But without, like I said, understanding the results of the environmental document, I really don't feel like I can go further than that right now in that comment. And we also know that traffic may be a big issue, but then we get to our next, which I already discussed in terms of my point of view on that, and then we get to the last bullet item, which is visual resources. And in terms of the views of the mountain or blockage of views of the Riviera, short, mid, long views, I really think that how it affects the design really is going to be dependent on the outcome of that visual analysis that's done in the environmental document. I appreciate the fact that a lot of work has gone in to protecting and minimizing the blocking of the views, given that it's only a two-story building and that it has some certain specific requirements that are gonna drive the height up towards that maximum amount. So I can appreciate that, and I think there'll probably be some mid-ground resolution to that that comes out of the environmental document, and I think I'll just leave it at that. For as it is right now, I don't really have any overarching concern in general about the way it sits right now, but like I said, I would like to defer until the environmental document is complete. Okay, so those will be my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. Just going down the list, on creek setback, I am hopeful that through the environmental review, the biological review, that staff, creeks, and the applicant can come to a number that makes sense for planning the particular project. Personally, I don't think 25 is a fixed number, and a lot of times, I don't know if 100 should be a fixed number. We have a lot of situations that we've looked at, a number of situations we looked at, a number of situations we're gonna look at, that we have to look at the circumstances that are involved. In other words, if somebody wants to build a three-story building 25 feet from the creek, we might have a different thought than somebody has a parking lot or a playground. You know, there may be structural issues, and maybe size, bulk, scale. It may be a fragmented benefit to try to restore something that doesn't have really a broad reach or run to it, and nobody could get at, but just to do it for the sake of doing it based on a certain dimension, I don't think that makes sense either. On the other hand, on this, so I'd like not to be setting precedence that we can't have flexibility as we review projects going forward. So let's base it on this particular situation and how it works out between staff and the applicant, and I encourage them to do that. On the other hand, this is a very large site, so if there's going to be some type of give, perhaps, it's in, towards the standpoint of enlarging to 25 feet, as opposed to other sites that are constrained, what is the net impact of doing that? If there is a benefit, it's the losses, some square footage and a large site and some parking places. And what it comes to is, when this comes back to us, and let me go to visual resources, and then I'll come back to the end. Visual resources, I think it's, we're talking visual resources from a pedestrian level, not centerline of street, I don't think, we're talking pedestrian. I don't see this really as a big issue. It's not blocking views where people congregate or what they feel about Santa Barbara. These are corners with little pedestrian traffic, and I don't, I think it's a scale that makes sense, and obviously, if you move 50 or 100 feet either way, your view becomes unblocked. But then we get to the circulation and the traffic situation. This project, if I read it correctly, is going to probably, because it's in the downtown grid, if there is a nonmitigatable impact, we have to come up with overriding considerations at a planning commission, right? Okay. So we're gonna consider other factors. So when you're thinking about setbacks and how you're working with staff, I mean, it'd be good if you guys are in concert at the end of the day, rather than we're not, and then we're trying to figure out what's our overriding consideration here, but I think starting with accommodation and working together, that would help us go in the right direction. Secondly, when we're reviewing traffic, I believe at some point, when these projects, when this plan comes back, we're gonna be looking at vehicle miles traveled as part of the impact. It's part of our, it's coming down from the state that you have to look at it, it's evaluation greenhouse gas reduction statewide, it's part of our community action plan, our cap plan to look at it. One item is evaluating every project on its impact on greenhouse gases, and that's not just the building, that's also, that would come from traffic, et cetera. So again, if this is contributing to that effect, it's not just a nuisance or intersection analysis, it's something else we have to look at and try to make a decision that this could, we could make a finding for overriding consideration. In that regard, the feasibility that people would be looking at for the Site A or Parcel A, when it came for environmental scoping hearing, there was the residential component. And a benefit of that residential component was well calculated, how many middle-income units can we get, taking advantage of city policy? How many, an off-site multifamily affordable, big A affordable project? All of that was well calculated under the rules to see how much housing you could actually get. Now, there's a possibility that goes away. One of the benefits of having that housing is that this was classified as a mixed-use project, okay? You had the housing and you also had the retail, some of which would be supported by the residents, versus if it just becomes a hotel, there's a benefit to that. If it becomes vacation rentals, there's probably a benefit to that. But we're hopeful that there's some, I'm hopeful, there's some component to get worker or affordable either onsite at the hotel or some other site that the applicant controls. So we live in the spirit of when this first came to us. Again, overriding considerations. If there is some, a housing component, I think that's a benefit to this program because we know we need it, especially on the south side of the freeway, and especially where workers are being employed for retail operations and more hotels, et cetera. So those probably are my comments. I didn't want to get off message with the three, but I think overriding considerations is gonna be a big part when this comes back, and hopefully the applicant and staff can work together, and also with any potential new users could work together to make it attractive to everyone involved and make it attractive to us to rule in favor of overriding considerations on the traffic impact. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the architecture and the use are appropriate, and I, in summary, on the issue of the creek setback and the size of the building, I'd like to see more creek setback, minimum of 35 feet, and less building. It just feels a bit massive for that site, to me. But underlying all of the project, literally, is what Heal the Ocean brought up with their letter, and what they've found that's oozing out from under that site is pretty ugly. And I would like to see the city, the property owner, and Heal the Ocean get together and see what they can do about cleaning it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins.
Let you go back cleanup there. Thank you. So I can agree with Commissioner Pujol on the site plan. There's, it may be tough for your tenants to stomach, but it would be nice to see more of that retail out on the street, use some commercial development policies and various design guidelines that we have in the city that encourage street furniture. So I know that that would create, that's gonna create more of a conflict with your mountain views, but I think it's worth that compromise. In terms of the creek setback, I would support a larger setback, and I'd also support, in some capacity, the roof deck becoming more permanent or otherwise conditioned space and added to the square footage. So if you have to lose building square footage, maybe there's a creative way to make some trade-off happen up on top with a more permanent space there, or even a separate retail space or a cafe or a restaurant. And the other benefit may be of pulling that retail component to the street is you get the roof deck happening closer to Yan and Ali Street and further away from the highway, so something to think about. I wouldn't stand in the way of the site plan as you have it drawn, but those are just my armchair architectural comments. So, but one more, on the furniture there, or the corner, Garden and Yan and Ali, I get that supermarkets don't want to have two entrances, but it does seem like a bit of an island or a stretch to have people walking, locking their bikes up there and walking all the way around to the other side. So if there's a breezeway or another elevator or escalator up to that, that creates another entrance to make it easier for people that are walking, there will be people walking to this establishment from the funk zone, from future development in the area. So I'd like, if I may, with all due respect to the design team, see a little bit more of an inviting entrance right there at the corner for pedestrians. I sure would like to see somehow we end up with additional parking. There was somewhere in the staff report that said the staff or Public Works doesn't support parking onsite that exceeds the standards, or maybe I misread that, but I, you know, we certainly have a huge parking problem in the funk zone, and to the extent we can create some extra parking on the site, even if at the, if it compromises the setback into the creek, I would support that. I don't really have any comments on traffic and circulation, I would wait for the, some further studies on that. And I just want to lament the fact that this is in the HLC zone. Again, due respect to the owner and the architectural style that he likes, I think the building's maybe too large for that particular style. I wish you luck with it, won't stand in the way of it, but we have an eclectic mix of architecture in the funk zone, and I think we're missing an opportunity to put something here that is more eclectic and not stretching a theme too far in what's been proposed. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think this is a great site for what you have planned. I'll probably have some comments that don't make you think I support that all the way, but I support that, I support this site entirely for the use. I think your site plan is gonna be worked on, but I don't have a problem with it. I agree with you that for the use that you're projecting, that this is typically how people get in and out of a supermarket. They're not doing it right at the street, they're doing it in an internal spot in a parking lot, and I don't have a problem with that. The, of the three bullets that staff has, probably the least I'm concerned about is the circulation, because I think there's still so much to be determined about that. You know, the garden underpass and entry into the city already is a mess. There's a choke point right when you come out from under the freeway going north that will never be resolved. It's basically one lane going under there going north, because everything else is going one, two lanes either direction under the freeway, so I just think you're gonna have to live with that. If you do end up with a Class 1 impact, I'm sure I'll go off on a tangent here in a few minutes, talking about the creek, on things that would appeal to me for overriding considerations, but certainly you've already mentioned a couple of those, and that's the lack of this type of service as an under, it's an underserved type of service in this neighborhood. And so I would encourage you to keep your chin up on that one. So the visual massing, you know, of the simulations you showed, the most disturbing for me was the one where we stood the other day, basically, south on Garden looking north from the right-hand side of the street. That one pretty much just obliterates the entire mountain range. The one that was most encouraging to me was where we didn't go stand, but I think you showed it today, as if you went left across the street looking northeast, and that one looked very, very similar to your prior project. To the extent that maybe that, the one that, sitting on Garden looking north, could carve out a second floor niche to see a little bit of the mountains or reduce the height in just particular places, so you would get, it just wouldn't be obliterating the mountain views, I think that would be appropriate. It's not a deal killer for me, that's a tough spot. You're pretty much up on a pedestal at that intersection, you know, either way you go, north or south, the elevation start dropping, so I think even a high one-story building might look just as visually bad to some people as a two-story building. In regards to creek setback, I continue to be much more focused on what's in the amount of feet that you wanted, that you want to set it back, rather than the number. I agree with George that more is better. I would disagree with your applicant's consultant there, but I would agree with your consultant that what you put in that designated area can possibly improve upon just the more is better thing. I'm disturbed by seeing you guys get excited about not working on reducing the bank ramping, because for me, that assumption is that any, any part of any restoration part on a creek that is, has vertical banks always, right now, includes reducing the verticality of that bank. You would have flood control work there to do, but that's usually part of that project on whether, whether you can ramp it more than vertical it, and what that would mean, and what that would mean to your calculated top of bank and then your resolved setback. But if you could come forward with a top-notch restoration program in that 25 feet, one that also afforded ability for these endangered turtles to get out of the water reasonably, I think we could, we could talk about that. I think it's clear that as you go south in that corridor, that the burden's gonna be on the developers to squeeze out every amount of foot, of setback foots, feet that you can, okay? So I think trying to live on 25 feet or trying to have the city tell you it's 100 feet, I think, isn't the way to go. I think what's important is what you're going to put in that setback, what type of restoration. I think what's important is what you're going to put in that setback, what type of restoration. So, it kind of leads me off into my tangent of what I'd be looking for when you come back in, and if you had a Class 1 mitigation, and where you would sway me on some of those overriding considerations. And I think there's opportunity for, well, let me preface this, because I didn't know Hillary was coming today, or else I would have read her letter first and probably sent it a lot more credible on what I was talking about, about groundwater. I just know that's an issue from my work with the regional board. But I'm not convinced that anybody knows the answer on whether retention and infiltration is a good idea, or if treatment and conveyance is a better idea, knowing what's underground there. And so, I'd be interested in, when this project was ready to go, on having that answer addressed. If there is contaminated groundwater there, if there are flumes that are ready to move around, infiltration of your, of a focus set of stormwater is not a benefit. It would be better, I think, unless somebody wants to educate me at a later time, to take that water on-site, treat it, and then convey it into your eventual destination, too, which would be Laguna Creek, Laguna Channel. So, given that, I think there's potential for more permeable areas on your site plan, particularly the fact that you do them in your front parking stalls, but not in any of your other parking stalls, okay, around the back, right? So, I think that would be a benefit. I'm not inclined to like access to whatever your eventual setback and restoration area would be. That is fenced off now for a reason. It's got a non-climbable fence that the city put in at its expense, and then as you go across the bridge and around on the city lot, and then across the street on the city property, there is a fence there for a reason to keep people out of that watershed. And I think a, an argument for a successful, smaller setback and restoration is also an argument for having no access in that area. So, it would just be dedicated for a restoration area. I also think you should talk to the city about maybe expanding your restoration area more to the east, possibly onto city property. So, going past your property line to make sure that you're running that as far as you can to benefit both sides of the creek, and maybe making the case that what you couldn't do on the west side, you did on the east side, so that there's adequate restoration and habitat improvement over there, but maybe it wasn't on your side, and that would be part of your mitigation. And then, off on a, off on a tangent of just things I'd look for and improvements, I continue not to be a proponent of parkways with landscaping. If you were going to do those, I'd like to see LID projects right out at the curb, where they were detention basins along the curb, and/or trees that were staggered in a sidewalk with tree grates, so that the, you had a wide sidewalk, but you're walking in and amongst the trees, sort of like the block where La Arcada is. And then, bicycle parking was brought up, too. I share a couple of the comments I heard, too, about the bicycle room, long-term bicycle room burdens we put on, we put on development, and then we walk away, and then you come back a couple of years later, and it's just a storage room. Just having a room dedicated for bicycles doesn't really do the trick. You could, you could visit Sonos down there in Chapala and find out what it takes to get your employees to participate or the public to participate, but it's not just throwing bicycles in a room. There's also, you could look for wall spaces that are round and look at vertical bike racks, vertical public bike racks, rather than horizontal. They take up more room. They look less obstrusive, so that they blend in more to the building. And I think what you do is you want, is you also want to make it scalable, so that you can add to it as more bicycles come, or you can admit defeat, that this is really going to be a commuter shopping center, and live with that, and take them away if people don't In addition to the views you talked, you talked about today, I would, I would still like to, somewhere tucked in one of the city policies is a, is a consideration for views from Highway 101 looking towards the coast. And, and that certainly begins to erode every time we put a multi-story building on a site right next to the freeway. So, I'd be interested in knowing more about how that particular part of the 101 corridor is going to look after the buildings there with regard to the eroded impact of that open space looking towards the ocean, rather than just driving down a corridor of buildings And then, finally, we've talked about, or I've talked, I don't know, I've talked, or we've talked about this, and we're still talking about it, actually, in regards to the AUD projects that are coming through that are of large scope, and that's a post-occupancy review, to look at assumptions that were made and what actually happened on the ground. And I think this project, too, I would, I would support and advocate for a one-year-after-occupancy report back to Planning Commission. Nothing that needed to be done or adjusted on your part, but some of the assumptions and, and burdens that were put on you, say for the creek, say for the parking, say for vehicle traffic, maybe at that time even consequences that weren't foreseen due to new development in the adjacent lots, but a report back to Planning Commission on topics like that that would be developed as part of your conditions of approval, that would help us learn about the consequences on the ground a year later after you're into the project. We frequently do these things, and then find out the Staples parking lot is too skinny to park my truck in, you know? Exactly. So, so, but that'd be something I'd advocate for on this project. I certainly think it's large enough and significant enough that there'd be some, there'd be some education points we could take from it and the assumptions we make, and from those, we could apply those to future projects, both good and bad. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll have a few brief comments. I'll take them in reverse order of staff's list, their visual resources, massing and view impacts. I think you got from my questions that I think there still might be some area to reduce the overall height of the building and bring it more into human scale. And I understand from what you said that your potential clients all like to have these volume ceilings inside, but I would submit that there are some very high-end markets that have more human-scale interiors, and so you might want to consider that as part of the way to get the overall height of the building down, and therefore reduce some of the visual impacts as seen from Yan and Ali and Garden Street. As far as the site planning and circulation, I agree with somewhat of what Commissioner Peugeot and Higgins had pointed out, that the presence on Yan and Ali Street could perhaps be improved, although I recognize you're dealing with a very constrained site, so site circulation is not going to be improved a whole lot from what you already have. But I think is, there's some opportunity there to look at additional site layout in order to be, to improve the presence on Yan and Ali. The issue that was raised by Hillary Hauser about the contaminants that are in the ground there is certainly a valid and important one, and I'm sure it'll be reviewed when we do the environmental review of the, of the site and the project. But it's not one that can be ignored, and it's unfortunate for the property owner, because it's going to be a lot more expensive to remediate whatever is buried under there, but it's going to have to be done as part of the project. And what Commissioner Jordan pointed out is very valid, and that is how you deal with Tier 3 stormwater management will be definitely impacted by what you can and can't do with buried contaminants. And finally, the issue of the setbacks. Commissioner Jordan pointed out, is something that I agree with, and it's not so much the dimension of the setback, but what you do in the setback that really makes the difference. But having said that, I think 25 feet in this location is adequate. And the reason that I say that is, to the north, we have Highway 101 and a big culvert, and that's never going to change. The south side of this has another bridge, and that's never going to change. Downstream of this, there are other properties that are not going to be moved back anymore from what they are right now. The wastewater treatment plant's not going to move. And I would remind everybody that just a couple of weeks ago, we approved the city doing maintenance in this channel, where it outflows into the ocean with zero setbacks. So, talking about hundreds of feet of setbacks in this location is, to me, doesn't pass the common sense test. It's kind of pointless, because you can make this a beautiful park and have a nice, open space in there, and this, the channel is impacted upstream and downstream, and it's not going to be of any, any real benefit. So, I think 25 feet is proposed, and as specified in our current local coastal plan is perfectly adequate. But it is important what you do with that 25 feet to remediate to the best of our ability what goes on within that channel. So, those are my comments, and I'll ask staff, Mr. Busk, do you need anything more from us, or did you get an adequate amount of feedback over the last three and a half hours? You got enough? Okay. Last, the applicant, did you get enough from it?
I've had enough.
I can't imagine why.
Well, no, it's, I've, I've heard a lot. It's very helpful if I can just get a little bit of clarity, what, and you can agree or disagree. It seems like what I heard from the commission is that, I would say generally, all of you agree that's what is done in the setback and how that whole restoration is accomplished is probably the most important thing. I know you spoke to 25 feet being enough. Sheila Lodge mentioned 35 feet. It seems like nobody's sort of in the 100-foot setback world, that it's really going to come down to the specifics, and maybe it's 35 feet, maybe 25 feet is okay, but that it's really important, the bottom line is what's done there, and that probably is linked to Hillary's comments and what's in the ground, and that that's all got to be comprehensively analyzed. Is that, am I close there?
It seems like it from my perspective. And along that line, too, I would want to emphasize something that Commissioner Jordan pointed out. When you start talking about what you do in that setback, I think the reason that that area is fenced off is a valid reason, and people talking about split-rail fencing to make it look pretty, kind of is counterproductive, because we were trying to keep the pollution out of there, the human pollution, from people that hang out in that area. So, I think that the fencing that's up there now is going to have to be the fencing that you put in there when this is all said and done.
Although, when it is all said and done, it is going to be a viable entity that's going to have security. I mean, they're not going to want anybody parking there, for instance, so it seems like there'll be more of a human presence as far as, as far as protection is concerned.
Except when it's closed at night.
Yeah. I just hate to see that 12-foot fence that's there stay, because it's a little unsightly. But I completely understand your point, so.
So, Mr. Chair, I just, so, I have a little history there. I think I was on creeks when we gave the property $75,000 to build that fence, and the reason we gave property $75,000 to build that fence, which can't be climbed, is because neither the tenant or the property owner could control it at that time.
Yeah.
So, I would say, I understand what you're saying, but there's a point where people just aren't there, or the property owner doesn't care, or the tenant that says it's not his job, and, you know, there are other fencings.
Well, yeah, and then it becomes an aesthetic problem.
Well, there's other aesthetic fencing around that seems to do the job on the city property. I mean, it doesn't have to be the ugly, non-climbable chain-link fence, is my.
Definitely heard loud and clear, you know, stronger from a couple of you than others, but as far as the whole pedestrian presence in the corner, to try to enhance that, I completely understand that. And it seems like we're, you know, the visual analysis ultimately on the views will be critical, but that we're close there, and obviously minimize the heights as much as we possibly can is understood. So, I think the main thing I wanted to hear from is on the creeks. Trish, is there anything else that you want some?
Mr. Chair. I wanted to add on to a comment when we were on the creek discussion. I just want to clarify for myself that some of the basics of what you described fit my comments in terms of flexibility in the creek setback and not being stuck on 100, or stuck on 25, or stuck on any particular number as the right number. I just want to make it clear that, at least from my perspective, my area of flexibility isn't ranging from 25 to 35. I don't know if 35's the number, or 25, or 40, or 45. I don't know. I think we need to see what comes out of all the interplay of these issues in the environmental document, and it's not beyond thought that it could be that maybe it's narrower on one end of the lot and wider on another. I don't know what that answer will be, but I just want to make it clear that at least the comment that I am making is not, you have a window between 25 and 35%. I just want to see what the outcome is.
Yeah.
But 100 seems to me to be a stretch.
Well, it's fascinating to me. I mean, just having learned things from Greg during this process, and how, you know, in this environment with the rainfall that we have, and given that specific, you know, condition, that really the setback isn't yielding any repairing value, because you end up with landscaping that isn't repairing at all. So, I think that's, you know, that factors into it, certainly. But appreciate very much your comments. We've got our work set out for us. Thank you.
Okay. Unless there's any other questions, that would conclude that one.
Bill, you're going to have to come up here. My name is Bill Wright. I went into this property, contracted in this property, inked it, August 1, 1978. Mrs. Lodge was just a young lady. I was a middle-aged, I was six foot four and had a full head of hair. Obviously, I'm being a little bit cute with you, but my, there's a point in telling you this. Our family, some of which, a few of our family were here today, but we don't have, and never have had, any outside investors. This is a family partnership. We've kept through thick and thin. It's been difficult at times, because this property cost a lot of money. We haven't been able to pour an ounce of concrete in all those years. What I'm here to tell you is we're dedicated to doing things correctly. You kidded me, Mrs. Lodge, years and years ago, when we did the specific plan, that Bill Wright did things right. That was a joke, was, I feel the same. We're not in a hurry. We weren't in a hurry, but I'm, I'm getting a bit yawned, and I'm, I'm a bit more in a hurry these days, because, and so on. So, we want to do it correctly. I think you've had some wonderful comments, and we'll listen to those comments, and we will do this correctly. Through thick and thin, some way, we're going to do something forever and ever, and it's going to stay in our family, and so on. As you know, the rest of the property, down to the railroad tracks, both sides of the street, belong to the same family, all of it, et cetera. All that vacant land has been paid for, and it ain't for sale. We get offers on a regular basis. We are not sellers. Hope to do something nice at the entrance to our city. Case in point. And you will understand this and remember this, Mrs. Lodge, Mayor Lodge to me. The Garden Street, I'm sorry, the off-ramp interchange was to be at Santa Barbara Street, if you remember. You're probably the only person in the room that remembers that, Mrs. Lodge, other than myself. I thought it was a dumb idea. I drafted it out on my own drafting board, took it to Caltrans in San Luis, and they said, wow, maybe you got something here. And what I drew on one Sunday morning is the way it was built. It's a boulevard. I got to razz Greg Hart, isn't that his name, councilman? Yeah. He thought it should be down Santa Barbara or even Garden Street, had a 60 or 80-foot right-of-way. I disagreed vehemently with him. This is the entrance to our waterfront. It ain't ever going to change. It is not going to ever change. Let's do it first class. Let's make this thing right. Thank you very much for your call.
Thank you. Okay, that will bring this item to a close, and then we'll go on to our administrative agenda. Staff Hearing Officer Liaison Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, two meetings since we last met, five items total, nothing out of the ordinary. The only...
The only item that was interesting to me, well, was the most interesting item, was a conversion of a four-unit apartment complex on the first block of Chapala coming off of Cabrillo Boulevard to a hotel. And the, the apartments were, were very big, like 1,500 square feet each. So there, I don't know if you'd really call them apartments, but they are going through the conversion process with the current owner to be under hotel designation used as hotels. So I guess lamenting the loss of four apartments, but in that particular part of town, it seems pretty reasonable. So nothing else to report. Everything else was just minor remodels and additions and existing footprints with houses and setbacks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campanella?
Yes, at the Architectural Border, sorry about that, long meeting. At the Architectural Border Review, two items of interest. 15 South Hope Avenue, which is a 48-unit residential project with some, some commercial under AUD, is proceeding in its concept reviews. It goes back again the last Monday of the month and will be coming to us the first of October for our comments, if everything stays on schedule. 715 Bond Area Avenue is a, came in under AUD. It's in the C2 zone. It's on a 5,000-square-foot lot and its program was proposed by the owner for seven units with a, on a four-story structure. And the comments were to look at again and try to reduce the height and scale of the building. That's about it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding water, though the Water Commission's meeting was canceled for this month, I do have a report pertaining to D cell that might be of interest to the members of the public. There've been some media reports that the Montecito Water District was interested in potentially partnering with the City of Santa Barbara on reactivating D cell. And I'm just wanting to report that on July 27th, the General Manager of the Montecito Water District did communicate with the California Coastal Commission and the city for, with a formal request for that partnership. On August 31st, the Coastal Commission, specifically Tom Luster of the Energy, Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency Division communicated back to both the General Manager of Montecito Water and Joshua Hagmark that the coastal development permits do allow joint use by the city and the Montecito Water District and any other regional users, as long as the overall water production and distribution from the facility remain within those scenarios. And it goes on to describe in more detail. So there is some movement afoot to, to explore the specific agreement development. And the Coastal Commission has asked that any formal agreement between the city and our other regional water districts would then go back to the Coastal Commission for review and support. Looks like, as you can tell, things are moving forward with some joint participation in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting. The next Planning Commission meeting will be one October.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick announcement.
Okay.
The meetings, the Planning Commission meeting of September 10th and September 17th have been canceled, so the next meeting is October 1st.
All right, thank you.